If you could possibly speak a little louder than the muffle. Yeah, and then the microphone can't pick you up. If you'd like to pick that up.
Oh, okay.
Okay, nice to meet you. Yeah, not bad.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, let's see here. Let's do the pledge first. We still got two minutes unfortunately. Yeah. Amy's trying to get us off the floor.
I'm a chiropractor. The whole hand still? The whole thing. Yep. Kathy. A hair doesn't make the whole hand. Probably your pack minor muscle is compressing the blood. I'll check you afterwards if you want. And she may be right. No, no, the doctor said to compress her.
Is for the next appointment. America. Republic for which it stands.
Todd, you are up. You want to go ahead and start? Good morning, everyone, and welcome.
Good morning, Commissioner. I'm Todd P. with the Port County Planning Commission. We've been working on the sub-division rates for quite a while. Some rates were adopted in 1984, and they have not had a major update since that time. There was some attempts to update in 2004, 2007, or whatever it is, it was before my time. So in 2012, there's a strong need to recognize that there's old jargon in here, old, you know, some of the federal state agencies have changed the name. So there's some changes that need to be changed. But at the same time, we also recognize there's some other issues of how it was actually working out in the field. We need to make some change to improve those things too. And there were a lot of gray areas in the plan. So we started this really in 2012, and it seems like it's forever, but this was an unfunded kind of a project. We didn't ask the commission for any money, and the different review agencies was to meet with us. We also had the Home Builders Association, and we had, we had Brimfield and Brewstown on the steering committee. We had the Health Department. Every year, just going to speak today, we're part of that. But getting our tax map on there, and we had the Building Department involved in that. So we had a lot of eyes on the plan to see what should be made better. The whole reason for today is to talk about the changes we want to do to make it a better subdivision rate plan for the county and provide, in my mind, a better product for home people coming to buy houses in Fort County.
Are you saying subdivision rates?
Regulations.
Regulations, okay.
Yeah, we're not changing the rates.
Okay, right. I just wasn't hearing.
No, no. The purpose of this meeting is an information gathering meeting. We're shooting this out now to the, I think they might have got it yesterday, but they've given a copy of it. And then we're also, after we get back to our offices, going to send it out to the developers, to engineers, who work on these projects. You can probably get the realtors, the homeowners associations, so they all have copies of it. And we didn't want you guys to get all these questions being fired back at you like, what are you guys doing?
We appreciate you coming. That's exactly what's going to happen, and especially if you have not changed that regulation where they have to put up a cash bond. That's, that's a real sore subject with developers.
We'll talk about that towards the end of this as we open the session. Okay, so if you look over your pages, we're on the second page or third page really, and it's articles one and two. And these are really simple. The article one is just the jurisdiction. Let's go. There really wasn't anything major in there. Definitions, again, we're replacing all the gray areas and updating the language to meet today's technology. There really was a lot to talk about there. The next page though, section 301, 302, and 303, those were dealing with people coming, applicants coming in to see them. Before, you don't have really any requirement to be a pre-application meeting, but we're strongly encouraging a preapplication. So before I even start designing anything, maybe you want to do this project, what do you guys think? The next section is 302, and that's the preliminary plan. And that preliminary plan comes to us, again, as mostly, it's entirely, mostly pre-engineering. They haven't gone into the, really nothing bulk of the preliminary plans yet. They just want to make sure the subdivision is going to work, whether there's any problems with zoning or local township, or we're going to have a problem as reviewers of future planning, what can guide them up to look for. So in the plan currently, that process is completely optional, and people who do not do the, or to the preliminary plan usually is recently admitting, so it seems like it's real charge for 301 or 302. So it makes now, you're charged for preliminary plan. But the idea though, it stays in the preliminary plan because by coming in and opening up the building again, it's going to cost more.
So when I come in with a plan for development, who's all involved in that? Is zoning planned there or utilities?
So the plan has to be consistent with the township's name, whatever township it's in. And then it also has to be consistent with the subdivision name. So then there's, you know, there's health department rules, there's water resources to fill, there's stormwater. We have, we have Larry's Engineering Office and the Tax Map.
So that's what I thought. Do I have to do that individually with every single one? Or is everybody in one room at the same time?
You bring it all together, and when we take the preliminary plans to the Regional Planning Commission, we have our comments sent to us and you provide that. So, okay, so we also expanded our list of reviewers, and probably the most notable, other expanded list of reviewers applies to fire departments. We got a situation that, where they're under the city of Kansas. Then, you know, the other thing too, is we didn't, we don't have any policy in there. We improved a lot of the preliminary plan by saying, okay, so long you take care of these five things, you know, we're good with it. So when they bring the plaque to us, we make sure they check those off at that point. What we want to do now is instead of checking it off at the time they go through the preliminary drawing, we actually want to start that engineering process, address the issues, you know, what, what conditions. Whatever conditions we place on the preliminary plan, we might be able to make sure it's not satisfied before we go to the improvement. The other thing too is the preliminary plan didn't have a termination.
Correct.
And so we're like, you know, we had, we had people coming to us with plans from 2005, things changed, some cases that were already planned up. So we're saying that you get a preliminary plan, and then you get three years after that. You know, we were the, it's like two years, and then a one more year of extension, so it doesn't mean that you just hang out there forever. Then in 303, we're changing the phasing, and the phasing is supposed to be moved up front, where the phases are, again, currently not required. Five, surveys of eagerness, we require all surveys, which is a good job of that, but not all of it. Open space, you want an open space statement on the law. The company restrictions they provide those to us before we take it to the Regional Planning Commission, but a lot of times they don't actually record the cover of the restrictions, so we're making sure to record those documents. Home owners should have a copy of them some, they need it, or they still have it.
Does that help?
Section 306, the plat extension, up to, up to 12 months. We had Maple Crest, and they came with also a lot of drawing. And, you know, basically, I would say, engineering, water resources, design the project one, so they didn't want to block any talent. So it took over 12 months to do that, and we don't want to do that. You know, it's basically a free service on the, I mean, it wasn't entirely like that, it was very, very much. It was very rough, and so we wanted them to be a little bit more focused and established. So if it goes beyond 12 months, what happens, they just recently started over again. But it would have been starting over with a better dot.
Can't understand what was.
We went past.
We set, we set, we set up something for both the plats and the preliminary, and the plats and replats. So then, so going on to section 309, 310, you know, owners of private, again, there's acres over five acres are basically exchange as a property owner's, those are exemptions. We don't want to stay currently in the plan, but we can cover that. That's the higher revised code. Request language should be more consistent with whatever is code in our section. Then going to the next page, in section 408, we talked about open space, what was it for?
Amy, I'm having a hard time hearing him.
Also, they're currently requiring.
Can't hear.
Lift your microphone, it's just close to you.
So also they're required to have. Also they're required to have five acres, five percent open space if you're a subdivision over 20 acres. You're a subdivision under 20 acres, you know what I mean?
That goes to this. It's, this is going to have to pick you up. Like, yeah, they're saying.
So your computer has to pick him up? The megaphone?
Okay.
Matter.
So, and so, okay, so also there's over 20 acres in size has to have five acres, or five percent, you see, five, five percent open space. Problem with that is the lots could be different sized. So in some cases, if you have lots that are acre, two acre lots, in a subdivision, they have plenty of space for their kids to run around and play. It's when you get those quarter acre lots, less than a half acre lot, that's when, that's when things really start to get more difficult for the kids to play in their own yard. So that's why open space becomes more important.
And that's also called green space, correct?
Yeah, it's also green, so open space is supposed to work like half of it should be green space left open, and the other half should be, provide some sort of active recreation component to it, like a swing set or trial elevator, things like that. Trial elevator typically what everybody puts in. So they do all that kind of stuff. So this is relatively a significant change in my mind for you. This may be a relatively significant change because what we're saying is anything from an acre to 20,000 square feet of a lot, instead of being five percent open space, we're increasing that open space to seven percent, which is an issue to increase, it's a little bit of an increase. If they're under 20,000, under 20,000 square feet, we're raising that up to 10% open space, we might have a much smaller lot. And so that's a, that's probably a significant change. Now, that's not, when I say a significant change to Fort County, a lot of surrounding kind of area cap, we're not really that far off. You also, in 408.5, there's a, you know, suppose, when you do a subdivision for an industrial or a commercial, you're also supposed to, you're also required to have open space. So when we did Maple Crest, we met, well, why do we have to have open space then? And open space for industrial park or for commercial is the idea there, is people, workers have a place to go and sit. We have, we have in Cascades and Brookfield, they do have an open space piece in there, right, right? Between the Lowe's and the, and the Walmart. You're almost going to see if there's a little part there, that's some open spaces.
That's cranberries, or what is that?
Well, there's another one, February Creekhead, they donated some land to the virtual township themselves.
With the Cascades, I thought they were doing like. But I thought with Cascades, there was just like new space.
Well. But there's a hill, I admit, a cranberry.
I'm not sunwriting, but, okay, thank you.
So the thing is, is really for developers, you really can't make it work for the open space for, for a commercial industrial developer saying, you know, I'd rather pay into the financial fund and let the township take care of the open space. So we're providing an option where, the idea, the ideal is, the ideal, the one here is to have it actually in the subdivision for the residents. That can have a, they move it to, although part of it, to the township. The township will provide new recreation space, you know, it gets after maintenance or anything like that. It might be for equipment or in the facility.
And they, they pay into a fund for that?
The developer would pay into a fund.
Is there a set amount they would pay into that fund?
It depends on the value. It's like, so, okay, we'll say the value comes to $2,000 an acre, they need 10 acres land, so that's $20,000 value. So they get $20,000 value.
It's one time?
One time.
It's one time, one time. And we also, we were also including some triggers in there to make sure the open space is put in. If you're going to do this open space, you can one time put the whole end, and they walk away. So we don't want to do that. We want to make sure there's a spot for progress and make sure it's put in properly. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Mary Helen Smith.
My name is Mary Helen Smith.
Because of that, we're going to have to speak up.
Thank you. My name's Mary Helen Smith. I'm the Director of the Regional Health Department for the County Health District. We appreciate the opportunity to begin as part of this committee to update your subdivision regulations and to try to help our builders to be able to navigate the process quickly. The authority of the Health District, the Health Treatment Systems is founded in 3712. And the Ohio Administrative Code are the rules that implement that statute that is how treatments are designed. In particular, section 8, speaks to the lot development we ruled for passing in 2015. It also requires that all new lots that are created have an un-blocked location. That's a significant change for new. There was a minor change to the sewage treatment system regulations in the House District. Does not affect your subdivision rules. It just basically changed the schedule for the street economy for some of the. On the next page, as I said, the higher administrative code, 701-29-0, it speaks to new lots and subdivisions. It lays out the requirements of how these rules and statutes pair up with chapter 711 for your subdivisions. And it indicates that any person. We asked that this be included because what tends to happen, if a community wants to stay somewhat rural, then their desire is to have sewage treatment systems. However, they don't usually come to help the Health District with information sufficient for us to be able to answer the question in a timely manner. So by having it laid out as to what the reference is, the developers, the architects, the people that are implementing this could know right out on, at the onset, that each lot that is locked up in this proposed subdivision would have to have a theoretical house, a theoretical driveway, a well, if it's going to be on a private water supply, and then to have the soil information for both a sewage treatment primary system and replacement. So we're hoping by adding these references right at the outset, they can make informed decisions as to whether they want to try to put in online systems, whether they want to look at a package treatment plant for the facility, or whether water and sewer are available to them.
So this application is in conjunction with all the applications that, that we have for this? Or is that another additional application?
It would be an additional application. So if they chose to come and create the subdivision and to have sewage treatment systems, they would then have to apply to the Health District. If they had 10 lots, they would have to apply for each lot, and each lot would have to have that particular information. So back in the 70s, it was a general, like overarching concept. We have these kinds of soils in the vicinity, they will handle this kind of sewage treatment system. Now the rules are very prescriptive, and it says that you have to have a soil scientist evaluate the soils on each of those lots. And then the system has to be designed to those particular soils. So you can't just take the whole area and say, in general, this is what's happening, you have to take each lot. So that's an increased expense, and we hope by having the reference that they can read that and know what is required. The Health Department is very cognizant that no new lot that is created is allowed to have an off-lock discharging system. So we can't guess anymore. We can't just say, well, we think it's going to fit there. There's isolation distances from the house, from the well, from the property lines. They need to be cognizant of the systems that are on the adjacent properties and how that will affect each other. So there's more processes is involved, and we're wanting to get that information out there. And again, as Todd said, have those conversations with the developer beforehand. Because knowing the informed decision, they could decide to put a package treatment plant in to serve that individual facility and go to EPA, or they could choose to go to Water Resources and pursue what may be water and sewer in this area. And then all of that in the context of what the 208 map that just got approved for the Fort County area, what is projected over the next 20 years for development in our communities. So we're trying to help them have information upfront, go here and read what you have to do, come in and have that conversation with us, and start to put the processes in place. So to go on, we specifically asked in section 303 of the preliminary plan information that not only define a private water supply, but also to define what a public water supply is. In section 305 for the plat, we again asked that they just reference what the statute and the administrative code to make it easier for the developer to find the information. On section 309, we make a recommendation, and it's really to help the homeowner in section revised code title seven. I can give you a parcel greater than five acres and not have to have it evaluated for the type of sewage treatment system. However, our recommendation is that it be considered for a sewage treatment because if most of the lot is a lake and taken up by a house, you may not have an area to put a sewage treatment. So the property exchange between you and I could occur, but the lot could still not be builtable. And most people don't think about that, but they don't have to ask us. So we just suggest, the language was already in section 310 of the subdivision rules. We made the suggestion that if this transfer occurs between properties, that the plat state that it was not reviewed for subject tank use or replacement area. So they're not surprised 10 years from now when they decide they want to build on that property, and we say it's not.
Who's liability is that? The seller or buyer? I know the buyer should, but the seller or buyer doesn't make any.
If it's more than five acres, they don't have to ask anybody.
Okay, so if I bought a piece of property, I would know I was supposed to ask, but you don't, you don't know. And so I didn't have that. Is there recourse from the buyer to, from the seller, or just tough luck?
I, I don't think I could answer that. That might be something for Dave Gagné to answer.
That's part of the legal.
Title seven allows it to be transferred. Our desire intent is that that doesn't happen to anyone.
Okay, thank you.
And there's a lot of times when people buy a property, that's the first thing they're concerned with, is what's the, the water sewer supply there, you know? So it sounds like buyer beware, but. And if it's listed with an agent, they always know that. But sometimes, as we know, people try to cut corners and save money, but in the long run, they not be the case.
Right. So I can, I can take 5.01 acres and give it to you, and no question asked to be posed to the Health District. But we don't want that to happen. And so we think by recommending that this language that you, that is already in section 310, be put on the plat, the person buying the lot, it might trigger the thought, well, it wasn't reviewed for subject replacement, I might want to build on it. So, so we're hoping that it just might get that question together. Section 405, layout of lots, and section 604 for water supply, again, just adding the language for the revised code, administrative code, and to specify the isolation distances for a private water supply. So whether that be a well, a hall quarter of storage, a pond, which we don't recommend, you know, whatever kind of private water supply, the isolation distance is referenced in, in Ohio Administrative Code 3701-28.
Thank you, Mary Helen.
Nice to meet you.
Good morning, guys.
Morning.
I am Larry Jenkins with the Fort County Engineers Office. I think you were at our office last week.
Yes, sir.
I apologize for not being able to meet you at the time.
That's quite right.
Zoom meeting. Unfortunately, everyone does those. It's nice to actually be in person, so it's different. I like that. So our, our section is unfortunately like 10 to 14 slides, so don't fall asleep too much here. There's a lot of information, you know, it's going to be good. The, the process to update these regulations over the last 10, 12 plus years, you know, it's super important. I've only been involved in the last two years since I've been here. But one thing that I did notice, and that I'm really, you know, passionate about getting the changes, is to help the townships get a road network that's actually on par with other communities in the area. And that's what really the subdivisions, regulations, in assets, they're subpar currently. Done in 1984, they're definitely due for an upgrade, absolutely. One of the things that we, and we investigated all the changes that were proposed, and those proposed changes were based on, hey, let's take a look at what other counties are doing. We focused in the Northeast, Northeast District of the County Commissioners Association of Ohio, that 16 county region. If we had questions, we kind of, you know, investigated what those other counties did. Because what we don't want to present to you is something that's, maybe I call it a Cadillac. You know, we don't want the high end, but we also don't want to be the worst in the area. We want to be far, far with everyone. So just know that as we go through these regulations, that's what we, we shot for. We were trying to at least develop some standards, and we turned over to the township for a roadway network that was on par with other communities and not substandard. Currently, just my opinion, the regulations right now are below par, and they definitely need, need to update. So we, we really appreciate you taking the time, listening to us today, you know, gathering information. And, and as you can tell, when you listen to the rest of the speakers, we're all, you know, really engaged and passionate about trying to update the standards for the county. So just going down through the slides, first one is section 402. Now, the way the articles are written, section 400 is really kind of subdivision planning. Our section is article five, and then we also were located, and the county engineers was shared, article five and article six with the Fort County Water Resources. Well, they deal specifically with water sewer. We deal with all the roadway network itself. So ours is now located mostly in article five, and then Tia will be speaking about article six. But there is some in the subdivision planning areas in article four that we still are aligned with. And the first one is road street design and under 402, and that's just dealing with traffic studies. Traffic studies have been required in this county for sure, and they're required in all other counties also. But we didn't have a spelled out procedure to figure out what, what kicked off or triggered the traffic study for the developer. So now this section provides some guidance to say, okay, a subdivision comes in and they produce 100 trip ends in a peak hour. That means 50 cars exiting, 50 cars entering the subdivision. That's going to provide, you know, do some impact on the roadway network. Let's look at a traffic study. The next thing is the county engineer will look at an intersection within a quarter of a mile and say, hey, if it's going to degrade the level of service of that intersection, or provide a safety issue at that intersection, the developer needs to perform a traffic study to make sure that we don't degrade that level of service. And when that traffic study happens, it's going to be the turn lane warrant, is it traffic signal impacts, is it road widening, whatever needs to happen. So that's that section on the traffic study, so.
And you only have AMATs, don't they?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, they serve on the AMAT, I'm here.
Right, and, and that, that's. Right. And that's the local agency that AFRIN, it's AFRIN Area Metropolitan Planning Agency, I'm pretty sure. And they do a lot, they work together a lot with us and we make sure that we have the right traffic based on whatever improvements are there with that traffic. So next section is the dead end streets and the stub streets. So in dead end streets, what we have is we wanted to ensure it's 401.
Yeah.
Okay. On the dead end streets, there's two types. There's a temporary dead end street now and a permanent dead end street. So a street that stops and terminates within a subdivision is now required to make sure it has a cul-de-sac. And that's for the ability for snowplows to turn around, ability for Amazon to get your package there, but also turn around, you know? Second thing is on a temporary dead end street in the middle of subdivision, it's now going to be required that the developer extends the improvement such that we go to the next intersection. Make sure we have the turnaround. It's all about turnaround access and not impacting property owners that are along that road that have trucks and garbage trucks backing into their driveways, tearing up their concrete, you know, busting up their improvements. We want to provide an area for turnaround. So those are what we call dead end streets and that section stub streets. Stub streets are the same idea, but a stub street is designed so that it can go to the property line because a thoroughfare plan has been put together and says, hey, we're going to extend this to the next private property. That next developer wants to extend that road. But what we want to do is put a T-type turnaround in there also. That's not in place. If you look at the picture, you can see this is a residential subdivision in, I believe it's Rooks Town in Knowles. It's, I believe, Hemlock Drive. I just pulled one out as an example of what we probably don't want. And this is why the new standard is in place. We got nine or 10 homes on this lot, but you'll notice there's no place for Amazon to turn around. There's no place for the snowplows to turn around. It just stops at the property line.
Yeah.
And so what happens is you get a big truck in there and what do they do? They have to back all the way out. Well, they generally don't back all the way out. They pull over private property.
Back into a drive.
And before you know it, it's an infringement to the property owner. That's just a small example of what we're trying to eliminate. Next thing is 406.3 schedule building construction. Big thing here is just clarifying what the developers, the subdivisions approved, what improvements need to be installed and complete before home construction can start. It's a safety sensitive thing. So what we don't want to do in the current rank, it had the road subgrade was built. That means that you could drive on dirt and build homes. Well, the underground infrastructure would be there, but driving on dirt, you know, a fire truck might not be able to get to the residence. An ambulance might not be able to get there. So we're requiring a base course of asphalt to be installed before any of the home construction starts. You might see a whole, one individual hole start at the beginning of the subdivision, but we're talking about homes within the subdivision. We want to be able to get safety services to those individual homes. Next thing is drainage easements. Under drainage easements, as Todd talked about open space a bit, what we want to do is move the stormwater maintenance, stormwater, storm sewers and stormwater drainage off of the private properties. What we're noticing is a lot of the home lot sizes, and Todd touched on it, when they're, you know, less than a quarter acre lots, there's no room for these easements. And over the years, there's been so much pushback from property owners. They don't want these easements on their property. Their property is their property. And, you know, it's encumbered by an easement. So what happens is there's infrastructure under there, yard barns get put in, fences that were right on top of it, swimming pools get put there. And then it stops the overland drainage and they can't maintain the storm sewer. So with the open space, we're recommending that these be put back into the open space and not impact the private properties. That's what our goal is on that one. Next one, 509.2 Eric is going to talk a lot about Portage Water, Sew and Water. But one of the aspects of that, now, and he'll get into detail on it, but what's going to happen is at the end of the subdivision, for every subdivision that's created, you see them all over, you'll see these detention basins or retention ponds. Ponds, and they're required within every subdivision to control the stormwater on the site. Well, in our regulations, in the Erosion Centimetres Control Regulations, we have, we have that the stormwater district, we have a storm utility and a stormwater district is going to maintain those detention basins and those retention ponds. And when they maintain them, we're seeing that some of them that were turned over weren't built properly. So what we are requiring now with this section is the developer will design and approve the detention basin, the big pond. Then after the contractor constructs it, then the surveyor will come out. He'll shoot that basin, he'll get the volume, set that to the engineer. The engineer, design engineer, will rerun the stormwater calculations and give a yea or nay whether or not it meets the how EPA discharge requirements. If it doesn't, then they'll have to, contractor has to fix it and make sure that it meets all the design discharge. That means they might tweak the design a little bit, but the big thing is it has to meet the how EPA requirement for the MPDS permit, which is the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System Permit, which, MPDS, how EPA, whatever. So anyhow, that requirement then, we want to ensure that when the stormwater district takes over those basins, they're built properly. And then the county engineer is actually going to be the one who does all the physical onsite maintenance of those basins over the next several years. And we don't want to take over that maintenance and force county charge that work back to the district when it wasn't built properly. This ensures that it's built properly. Next section 511.1 is plan review fees. This section is currently be charged for inspection fees, but we do not have the ability to charge developers for plan review. I go back to my experience of my last municipality. Let's say, and Sabrina's just going to understand this completely. In 2006, '07, '08, the housing market was just, let me say, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7. The housing market was going. All these subdivisions were going. In the municipality that I was in, we could not turn around plan review fast enough for the developers. So we had so much pressure that we were able to actually charge for plan review by hiring outside consultant, take off the burden of the staff and get a turnaround for the developers so we can get these out. And so we did that and it worked really well. We just charged the cost of the review. Well, what happened in '08? Nothing. Nothing happened in '08. It was, it was the bubble had burst. And so we did not have staff that we had to let go. We had nothing to worry about. We just didn't hire that consultant to review the plan anymore. We brought it back in. So what we want to do is, is the plan review allows, we're not saying we're going to hire outside consultants all the time, but it really is an ebb and a flow with the subdivision design. And it allows us some flexibility to make sure we can react at a timely manner to the development, however it's up or down. So doing plan review fees is, I think, a really good, good thing for that. 5203 is failure to construct or complete improvement. As Todd talked about before, there was really no end to the whole finishing the subdivision. Well, this actually, there's some reference to about an 18 month time period if you look back into the regs. But what we're doing now is we're saying that after the subdivision is platted, you only have one year to substantially complete this. You've got to at least be under construction to get everything ready. But you, by the end of two years, you've got to be done. So we stopped that to make sure that you don't have a subdivision that's just half built. And there's clarified options also to discuss. If that gets to two years and the developer's not acting, not completing everything, then we can obtain their performance guarantee and/or vacate the entire subdivision if commissioners can. Next thing is 513, haul road performance guarantee. So this is a really important aspect for the townships. So in some of the subdivisions, and I use the housing bubble as an example again. Say a subdivision was built in '06 and it was first phase of a five-phase subdivision. It only has one access, it only happens to have one access point into the subdivision. So say it got platted in '06 and then the bubble happened in '08 and nothing happened for seven years. So now the subdivisions, we have them right now. Those subdivisions are back going and they're ready to go. And what's happening? All the construction activity is coming in and out on the main road of the phase of the subdivision built in '06 and it's getting degraded. And that burden is put onto the townships, which we need to eliminate. So we want to put the burden of that degrading the pavement back on where it belongs and that's the construction activity or the next phase of the development. Now, we also encourage the use of additional road built by the developer that doesn't go through the subdivision and that would be even better. So that it doesn't impact and degrade the original phase of the one access point. But if they don't build an offsite haul road, then they're going to have to put a performance guarantee to ensure the integrity of the existing roadway. That's what the haul road.
Isn't it sort of like when they do the Roomba's sometimes?
Yeah, that's actually right along, right along with that. So, so an agency will do some work on our road word and we put a bond and then they resurface it. That's exactly the same thing. That's a road use maintenance agreement. That's what the Roomba's. Conditional acceptance procedures 516.1. It's a new section, Tony and Sabrina, the problem is it's new because we wanted to clarify the turnover procedures that existed for the township, the developer and everybody. But it's really not that much of a change as to what we're doing. We're still doing the same thing, but now what I see is there's a lot of confusion as to the turnover process. So we wrote, we rewrote that whole turnover process so that when you get to conditional acceptance, what's conditional acceptance? It means the plat is already recorded. It means that they're trying to do a substantial completion and everything else that's remaining. And then we get to the point where the developer says, hey, the plat's done. All of the main improvements are in. We want to have a conditional acceptance. And then the county engineer then will call all stakeholders together at that time. That includes the township and everybody involved. We'll do an inspection of what they have completed, develop a punch list for incomplete items or items that need to be, you know, corrected. And then once that's done to the satisfaction of the county engineer, it'll be forwarded over to the commissioners for your guys' approval to say, hey, let's go into maintenance now. Now, the thing to remember is the developer's still maintaining this whole subdivision all through this period and through the one-year maintenance period, snow and ice control and everything. But we just kind of had to itemize the steps involved because it's just, it's just seemed to be a point of confusion. So within that next one, we're going to go to 516.2. This is another aspect in the inspection that we want to make sure the developers know about and pointing it out is because it deals with each individual property owner's property pins, monuments. Super important in the world of surveying, obviously, and the land, to have each of the corners have monuments. What we're, what we're experiencing is at time of conditional acceptance, a lot of the work has not, say, been done on sidewalks. And that's where your front property pins are. So the landscaper comes in, they install the sidewalk as almost the last thing or when they're doing the landscaping of the entire front yard, and all the front property pins are ripped out. So what we're saying is, okay, we're going to allow you to install state minimum monuments and then we'll put in the rear monuments, rear property pin. I think the picture is really interesting because this is an example of a monument set in 1876 on the Franklin, in Franklin Township on the Summit County and Portage County line. That's been there for 125, 30 years. We surely aren't saying that the 518 three bar is going to be there 130 years, but we at least would like them to be more there, more than six months. So that's the intent of that whole entire thing. So next thing is after we get into conditional acceptance, we'll talk a little bit about final acceptance, but as we're moving into final acceptance, one thing before we accept or before we go to conditional acceptance, I didn't mention is we'll put an intermediate layer of asphalt down on top. So you'll have a base layer of stone and then two layers of asphalt when you get to conditional acceptance. But then when we get to final acceptance, what we want to do is make sure all the improvements are done, all the repairs are made, and then we'll force the developer to put that final layer of asphalt on. Because when we turn that over at final acceptance, we want the best road that we possibly can give to the township. So that's, it is in the regulation that street surface course should be installed as a final improvement. We've actually written it down that it has to be done at final acceptance. Next thing at final acceptance is the second half of that monument discussion I had. At final acceptance, we're going to install all the front property pins, stake them, and then be able to go out and inspect and at least let every property owner who's out there know at one time, this was checked by the county engineer's office and all the property pins are in and all the right-of-way monuments are established. That's the step that we wanted to add in there. Next thing is, this deals with the final inspection again. It's a similar process at conditional as final. So we're at final acceptance and we're going to do a final inspection at final acceptance. And again, because this is going to be a township road, we invite that stakeholder to us and he'll be at the inspection along with the designer, developer, county engineer. We'll mark everything that's deficient, make sure that it's ready to go before it's there. They'll make the corrections, they'll install the surface course of asphalt. We then will recommend to the township that, send a letter to them saying, okay, everything is done. We're going to be recommending this turned over to the commissioners. Then we'll, county engineer will write a letter to you guys and you guys will finally, after the one-year maintenance, accept the subdivision as part of the township road network. Okay? Last one that I have here, I debated almost with starting with this one. But this is one of the more important things for the township to, that relates to the road typical section. We, we're dealing with a typical section, obviously, from 1984. It's a little weird in terms of how my slide is. Todd and I are a little macking for it. He thinks it's a little confusing to read. So that's the engineer in me, I guess. So I'll walk you through it. The asphalt section has EX tip. That's existing typical and that's in inches of thickness. And then prop tip is proposed typical. So what you see is currently we have an inch and a quarter of asphalt surface and six inches of base. And that was all on dirt. Now, when I say it was on dirt, it's compacted subgrade. Give the developers the benefit of the doubt. It's compacted subgrade, as good as it's going to get. But the most important thing in pavement design is drainage. Maybe the three most important is drainage, drainage, drainage. And we don't have a drainage layer on our asphalt section at all. And when that happens, bad things happen when water freezes in those. And it's just, it's just the way it is. So what we're proposing is, again, not the Cadillac, but compared to other communities, we're on par with them with this new typical section. So I'm going to start on the far right. We're going to start down here where it says compacted existing subgrade. That means when we get the, get the ground compacted and ready to go in the picture, we start at the bottom. Next thing up is a brown layer that's called aggregate base and I have it new highlighted to the right. So we're going to add a four-inch aggregate base to our typical section, which provides drainage. The next thing that says is asphalt base layer coming up from the bottom and that's the six-inch base layer. That's the same, no changes there. The next thing is an asphalt intermediate layer. That's, that's the next new piece of asphalt for structural integrity of the pavement, but also an asphalt base is a thick asphalt material that's open graded. And so if it's left uncovered for a long period of time, water gets in there and it gets degraded. So by adding the intermediate surface layer at time of conditional acceptance, it seals the aggregate base, it seals the asphalt layer and it provides a good surface for that last year while we're going through the maintenance period. And then we're putting the inch and a quarter asphalt surface back on that was already there. Everything we added is, that now has a structural number, a pavement design structural number. And we've had a lot of requests from developers about, hey, we want to cement stabilize the subgrade because the subgrade itself has some clay in it and we want to pave earlier, whatever. So if they want to put together an alternate typical section, we will consider it. The county engineer will consider it, but the key is now it's written that we will not accept anything that doesn't at least meet, preferably exceed the structural design of this whole pavement section. So you will not get an inferior product for the township. That's what's super critical of the county engineer is providing a foundation that's solid and secure and not the Cadillac, but as good as we can get for the township because that's going to be their maintenance. To wrap up, I think in the, in the slides, I might have, I think, two or three. I promise I won't talk too much about that on the screen. But that's just how our new typical section is going to be presented. If you have some time, you look at the old section compared to the new one, you'll see there, there's not a dramatic difference in terms of horizontal layout on the whole thing. But we've added under drains to the pavement and it's just showing all of the different aspects that we're going to have. So it's the same thing. One has curb. The next one doesn't have curb, so if you can, I'm not sure, we've turned it around over. No curb.
Without a curb.
Yeah, the other one's got a curb. And then I think the last slide that I have. And then I think the last slide that I have uh deals with the chart that we've created so that you can just utilize the chart to determine what the different thicknesses for the asphalt design and aggregate base are. And I am actually done. I'm sorry I took a little longer. And I'll turn my section over to Eric Long.
Thank you.
Thanks, Larry. Go ahead, Eric.
Thanks, Eric Long with the Portage County Sewer and Water Conservation District. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
So uh, the Sewer and Water Districts, um, also, I mean, sorry, yeah, the, the Portage County Sewer and Water District. And the way we serve this is through the stormwater aspects of it. So the review of the stormwater pollution prevention plans and then inspections during construction, that sort of thing. Um, so in the changes to the document, what we set out to do is make sure that uh this meets the current standards. Um, in the, the existing subrings, you know, subdivision rules, there are a lot of sediment erosion control um requirements that are spelled out in there. Um, they were very important at the time in nineteen eighty-four when these were written because those rules and requirements weren't spelled out at that time. Um, today, there are a number of documents that are regularly updated through the EPA, through us, um, that uh define what those are. And we didn't want to be in a situation with subdivision regulations where we're constantly having to keep up with them. As you can see, we haven't updated these in some time already. Um, and we didn't wanna be in a situation where we're constantly having to meet these changing standards with regards to sediment erosion control. So what we did was we eliminated all of those um specu- you know, specifications on erosion and sediment control um in, in the document that were spelled out. Things like seeding specifications, um, different uses for um big, different controls that are used in controlling sediment during uh construction. Um, all, all of those things we wanted to take out, but at the same time, define exactly where those um documents, those requirements are. Um, so we defined three of the regulatory documents, the Portage County Construction Site Erosion, Sediment Erosion and Stormwater Management Rules. Uh, that is our local document that EPA requires us to have. Uh, and we keep it up to date with the uh, the EPA's current requirements. Um, their document is the High EPA NPDS permit. That's what Larry mentioned earlier. The NPDS is National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System. So, and then the final one there is the High Rainwater and Land Development Manual. Uh, that manual spells out the uh spec- specifications for the different controls, the very, you know, nitty gritty of it. Um, and the EPA also refers to the High Rainwater and Devastated Land Development Manual. So by defining these three documents, um, and saying that current condition of those documents is what governs, um, it, it allows us to make sure that we stay up to date with our subdivision regulations without having to go in and make changes to specific um requirements.
So all the regs are gone and then I have to go, you just tell me go look at these documents and that changes fluid.
For the most part, yes. Yeah, I mean, there are certain things in our document that are not in the uh EPA's documents that we have to keep in there and, and change if necessary. I, I guess I can talk about that real quick. Um, our, you know, critical storm requirement in there that is not required by the EPA, um, that was even put in back in nineteen eighty-four. So that's doc, you know, a requirement that we've had with our subdivision regulations has been in place all the way back that is even more stringent than what is required right now. And it was considered important, that is considered important now. EPA encourages communities to have a similar requirement in theirs, but it's not, not in their document. So it's important that we maintain that in this document we did.
Okay.
Um, essentially what that does is, is say that um, it, it governs the rate of release of stormwater from the post-construction. So once it's built and had that pond, the stormwater pond that's in place, uh, it says, you know, at, at what rate you have to meet that, that release based on existing conditions and proposed conditions.
Okay.
Um, Larry also touched on the as-built drawing requirements. Um, that's critical for this uh, the with us taking over maintenance of these facilities, we have to make sure that they're up to what was submitted uh after they get put in the ground. Um, so, so that's something that we have been wanting to have in here for a very long time, even before I started, and I've been here for about a decade. So it's great to finally get this requirement put in place in this document. There is a wetland impacts uh section there, um, really, very real changes to it other than we spelled out what today's um, what today's requirements are for the procedure of it, you know, what we have to step through. Um, okay, then the residential stormwater management program, uh, also Larry mentioned that. Um, essentially what that is, is we're taking on the maintenance responsibility of the stormwater ponds on, on the facility. The reason for that is that uh residential subdivisions have throughout the years been very poor at maintaining themselves through a homeowners association, uh, almost to the point where I haven't had much of a success story to point to. Um, and that's why this, um, you know, got put into place. Also, not a requirement of the EPA, but a, a very important part of our program. Um, and what it, we changed in the document was to first define that we will be doing the maintenance, um, requiring a long-term maintenance uh plan uh for those, um, for all those uh, things that get put in, all the ponds. Um, and then we also have in there that we want to define how the runoff that all, runoff from all hard surfaces has to be conveyed to these stormwater um control structures. Uh, and that whenever possible, through a centralized system, meaning roof runoff drain should be tied into a stormwater management uh stormwater conveyor system, you know, subsurface wherever possible.
Is this the entire county?
Uh, y- yes, I mean, for any subdivisions that go in in the county, it's, yeah. Okay, and that's.
Eric, who will be paying then, or like, if you go out and do an inspection and there's maintenance required, once that retention on there, would it be like the homeowners association or, you know, a lot of times those homeowners associations, a lot of times will go to the twelfth after a while?
Yeah, that's correct. I mean, our, our stormwater maintenance, I mean, our, our, our stormwater management program for the county um through the stormwater district, that's, you know, that, that maintenance is being done by the, the, the county engineer's office and is part of our stormwater district and stuck to part of that management plan for that. So, so that funding isn't provided by the, the, the homeowners association, it's part of our stormwater district.
That's that nine-twenty-three-year parcel that we get taxed, okay?
Yes.
Okay, just in case we get asked any, okay.
So, yeah, I, I just wanna clarify what she said because I'm new.
Sure.
So we, we have a fee on our taxes, property taxes.
Correct.
That accounts for that. So by me, all the way in Aurora, you're, you're now viewing all the stormwater ponds that, that are there in the county is because of that tax, property tax, you're taken care of.
That's a good question. Um, no, the, the anybody who pays into that, so that's all of the unincorporated portions of the ca- of the county. And that's where you were getting that before, I apologize.
That's right.
Yeah, no, the, each of the cities have different, each of the municipalities have their own different regulations and they may not have those same ones uh for their, their homeowners.
So the municipality could have a set of standards and for everybody that doesn't have the city standard, we have the county standard.
Right.
Gotcha. Bye. Okay, I think that's all I've got. I don't know if I have. Excellent, thank you.
Well, I don't think.
How far over do you need?
I can, I can, you want me to send a email?
Yeah. Are they coming, how are they coming?
It's through Zoom.
Yeah. Yeah.
Kia. Hi.
Ready?
Hey, can I? Um, can we have my slides, please? Thanks.
There you go.
Hey, good morning. Uh, my name's Kia Ratchelidge. I'm with Portage County Water Resources and I've been part of this team since uh twenty twelve. So I'll be glad to analyze these changes to the document. Um, as, as you may know, um, PCWR currently has our rules and regulations. So when we would, started working on the subdivision regs, there weren't a lot of changes that we needed to make for our section. So that's why I have two slides and I'm gonna go really fast, so hopefully we'll keep you on schedule. Um, the first thing is that water, sewer and water is now in um Article Six. So that's really nice for the developers so they can flip to Section Six and be working on sewer and water only. Um, part of the issue with um our document, there was a lot of terms and acronyms that were used, you know, interchangeably, and it created a lot of confusion for the developer. So we wanted to clear that up and use standard terms throughout the document so that there was no confusion. And so we worked on doing that. Uh, we also listed all of our design criteria so that they know where to go get them and what we will use to review their design. So, and, you know, like making sure they review the two oh eight map and that things are in line with what they're planning to do as well as making sure they're using the most current documents. So we added language in there so that they're required to use the most current documents and the documents that we use in our office. Um, we changed to escrow account performance guarantees. We've been requiring it in our office since about twenty thirteen, but now we've pretty much put it in black and white. And these are only for projects that are in the right-of-way or if they wanna be platted before we've accepted the sewer and water. As you know, sewer and water tends to go in before everything else. So, you know, we're ahead of the roads and things like that. Um, so we only require it if they wanna be platted and/or they're doing um work in the right-of-way. And we've also reduced the requirement to a contingency of ten percent, twelve percent because we tend to hold ten percent in the account all the time. So there was no need to have twelve percent in there. Can I have my next slide, please? Um, so with respect to the maintenance guarantee, we increased that up to five percent to ensure we have adequate funds. Um, you know, cost of materials has gone up. And so on smaller projects, five percent isn't enough to uh guarantee the maintenance of a project if the developer decides not to come back in and fix it. And we've also, um, we, we've added the ability to extend our maintenance guarantee and/or the percentage, say, um, a designer wants to use a new technology or a new material that we're not quite sure about. Uh, we have the ability to prove that and then um increase our, our maintenance guarantee on a new technology or new material. The only other thing we did was we changed the liability insurance limits to match the county's current limits. So that's pretty much a summary of what the changes were to water resources.
Thank you.
Okay, to wrap this up, we have a pretty aggressive timeline. Originally, we were pretty much done at the end of October. I wanna have this meeting right around that time, but you both were running for office at the time. But we didn't, there was fairly candidates involved to look at the documents and things. We decided we'd, after election, we were both for.
Thanks.
And uh, so what happened was we didn't want to tone it in its first couple of weeks of being in office with, with a big document like this. So we moved it all the way to the end of January and then moved it to today's date. So that's how the timeline keeps, you know, getting back. And so we, so in order to tighten that up, we were kind of having aggressive schedule here. We met with the Township Trustees Association very formally on Saturday. The day is the twenty-third. On, on Thursday this week, we meet with the township, uh, zoning inspectors. Um, and then we, in order to get this onto the April RPC agenda, the commissioners would first need to approve it. So that means a thirty-day uh notice and that means it has to be in the paper by March first for, for an April first meeting with the board. Um, we also have, we also um have a, a March seventeenth meeting with the uh public, with the engineers and developers and anybody else who wants. We're gonna send that misinformation out to them. We wanted to send that out to them after we met today so that you guys just didn't get hit raw about any information behind it.
Todd, going back to advertising to the public.
Yep.
Do you or David have an advertisement, does it have to have specific language? Because obviously, it's been a while since we've had to advertise just to clarify that we're advertising the correct information and making sure we have everything we need in it.
Uh, yes, one is, uh, a draft is, is circulating.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
And so, so yes, we're at, meeting with the, we're, we're meeting with the public and trying to gather as much information as possible for your April first meeting. And then, of course, it gets finally adopted by the RPC board. So when we, I, I do know that some people think this is too aggressive because some of the townships want to participate, you know, in this discussion. The main ones already have and, and my, and our view because we had been filled out at the very, very beginning and this time came on uh more recently, but they've been involved in a lot of discussions. We asked if they had questions or not. But I also understand, you know, we were, we were at that meeting and they said they wanted to get together and I heard that they found that some people had called our office, for example, I mean, the whole team that's ever called our, our office and asking for copies of the, of the changes. If you put online, they're all available online and, but they want her copies of it and they don't know if they have enough time to respond.
Yeah, and I don't see, I mean, I talked to Chris Madurianus, if we do need to extend it out past April. We, we waited all these years if, if it helps them because they're the ones that seem to be majorly impacted.
Right.
And, and that was the call I got yesterday from the Township Association and that they, they feel like this is too aggressive of a timeline for a lot of information and they wanna have a little more time to um read it, process it and get feedback on it, so.
And I kinda, and I kinda saw this coming myself.
You do, okay.
They, they need more time. They were really trying to figure out how they're gonna meet between now and the seventeenth to give us feedback.
Yeah.
You know, um, you know, some subdivisions are coming in. And so part of the, part of our goal is to try to get these in before they come in so that they're not, we're not, they're sort of in the next two years under the old regs. So that's, that's part of the push for us. But I, I mean, I, I, I'll have my principal working today. Um, when those projects are actually gonna really come in. But, uh, I mean, we could, we could push it back at least a full month, which give everybody.
I was gonna say, maybe just like a month, maybe that would help. I mean, I don't know what the timeline is or any um new subdivisions coming in or.
Well, what we could do is if we get, if we did a month, if, you know, maybe just May first, whatever that, however that falls, and then do it in our May, RPC working, that's fine. And maybe what we can do is, we had a very informal meeting with trustees associations and maybe we have a more formal meeting with them to talk about it. You know, the, at the end of the day, we wanna have a plan to every town. So that, that.
Have you heard anything negative from anything and, and from, you got big ones, but from the little ones like Deerfield or someplace?
No, yeah, we don't have any active subdivisions there right now. Really, Brookfield, Root Town, Ravenna, Township and Frank County.
So, so. Okay.
They're the ones that water and sewer, but, you know, at the same time, we have heard, you know, concerns from the public about something.
You've heard from developers, but not the township?
And the developers are gonna have, the developers just know that we're working on it. And if you tell them, oh, your plan coming in, well, just so you know, the, the rate may change.
Okay.
And so that's what we tell them.
Okay. It's a mess up.
I had brought up about, the one issue about the developers having an issue about a cash line versus um, versus going out and getting bonded. It, and I think, Todd, you and I talked that that was still a provision left in here.
It is still left in there.
Cause I know that's one thing they're probably, when you um hear back from the developers, I know that's one of the complaints that I hear.
Well, I'll, I'll let Larry come up and answer that. And for some persons related to that. But one of the problems is the two thousand five fifty-seven, developers are getting letters of credit to move forward with like the language. Oh, yeah, they've got money and then they will, then they will totally opt in. Now we've got a planned subdivision.
Oh, we have several, yeah.
And then who's in April, you know, coming back to the town.
Well, the township, so it's not dedicated to the county.
Mickey is not here obviously today, but he's, uh, has a really strong opinion about the need to kind of carry on the method that we're doing. And he's, uh, he'd be willing to come talk to you and explain some of the experiences in his thirty-some years that he was there about, um, you know, things that happened or couldn't happen as a result of developers not finishing subdivisions, having to do agreements that they get subdivisions. having to do agreements that they kicked subdivisions because there's no money. They weren't able to finish. And, and there's a lot of things that, there's a lot of different methods out there. But the method that we currently have, I would just, I would probably say it's working. It's not, you know, beloved by everybody and I don't think any method will be beloved by anybody, everybody.
How common of a practice is that around like the surrounding areas?
So I looked into that, you know, in your district, the County Commissioners Association. And so it's, it's a mix, but we're not the only low rager out there doing it. That's the important thing is, and again, that kind of goes to what we were talking about. You know, we're not going to be the highest and lowest, you know, but we're doing what other counties are doing.
But, but the difference is, is that the developer has to put up the cash versus being able to go out and get it bonded. So why would we not allow for that?
So the idea is not to provide a secondary, you know, cash issue, you know? So the idea is the developer's money used to build the subdivision is the money that we would hold. We are not asking for additional money. So the developer gets a bond, they have to pay for the bond. It's such a difficult whole discussion to go into. And for sure, how a developer operates, you would probably spend hours with the terming on this.
Yeah.
So I don't want to get into all that and then speak for them. But our intent is with the cash escrow, it's the money involved set aside so you can finish the subdivision. We will release it whenever the contractor does the work necessary of a bonded improvement, we'll release it. So it could be the same pool of money. That's our intent. It's not intended to be cash over here required locked up and then we want to double the money. That's never the intent. So there's pros and cons to both. What Mickey's feeling is, is it's working really well right now and that's what he supports.
How long is that process that Mickey supports been playing?
The whole time he's been here.
Okay, so that, that's nothing new?
No, not here, we're not changing, we're not changing anything.
And probably the reason is we've got a lot of developments going in. And that's, that's why, and they develop in other counties that do not require that. And it creates a hardship for them because it's keeping their cash and tying it up versus they could go out and get a bond to put up the same money but not tie up their cash. It affects their cash flow.
Yeah, that, and that's what I hear a lot about. And just as we kind of go through the process, we feel we'll get feedback from the developers. That's why we're having the March 17th meeting, you know?
Yeah.
And then we want to give as much education to you guys as we can. And then I would also leave that spot for Mickey to come speak on that for sure also. The, the thing to also remember is we're, we're not the only ones doing this. That's the super important thing. And other counties are too.
So I, I would, what you just said, I would think we've been burned enough that Mickey's process is, is there. And I know there's other ways, Sabrina's saying, but we're trying to protect us from getting burned.
Absolutely, 100% sure. And that's his strong feeling.
Great, great.
But I'll let him speak to that first.
So, so what would be the difference of if they got a bond for that same amount versus them putting up the cash?
Can I speak to that? Can you hear me?
Who's that? That's Mickey.
Oh, is that Mickey?
Mickey, how are you?
Can everybody hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'd like to address that if I could. My best wishes from the sunny south to begin with. But we have had, we've entertained bonds in the past. I think it was probably about 15 years ago that they, they made a decision and allowed developer to put bonds up instead of cash. We've done that several times and at least a half a dozen times we have had the developer not finish the improvements. And we, when we went to cash the bond so that we could access the funds to build the improvements, we had nothing. The developer had already cashed out the bond. It was gone. We were holding nothing and the commissioners were on the hook for building the rest of the improvements. Now, we were able to fend that off three times since I've been here and the commissioners did not have to build improvements. But it puts you in a very precarious position. One not to be in, one very difficult to get out of. And the, the only way I can really assure you of that not happening is to make them put the money up. And they've got to pay for it anyway. I mean, not like you're asking for something that they're not going to incur. They've got to pay for the improvements anyway. So whether they, if they put the cash up, we'll get the improvements built and you won't have to pay.
So Mickey, what you're saying is they're allowed to go cash out that bond without our knowledge that they have.
I'm telling you, yeah, it's not supposed to happen that way, but I'm telling you it does. Not only does that happen, but in my experience, we've had a couple of times where they took the money out of the bank without my signature.
Wow.
Wow.
All right, Mickey.
So this is, this is not an assured thing. It's not said and done, just like you breathe. It doesn't work that way. We've had it happen both ways go south and those are bad situations.
Yeah, because you know, I, I've had several developers call me on that and I'm glad you explained it the way you did because now I understand.
Yeah, it puts the board in a bad spot because you're the ultimate authority responsible for that.
Yeah. If it's.
That's not where you want to be.
Cash it out without our knowledge, but you're saying they can and then there's nothing there.
They're not supposed to be able to, Sabrina, but it happened, I'm telling you.
Oh, gosh, wow.
And, and it was really ugly when we started calling the bank and we got the vice president of the bank on the line. They were all skittish and, and felt embarrassed, but it happened.
Oh, well, thank you for that clarification because that's what I understand. Okay.
I'll be happy to butt out right after I just say that I think the committee has done a tremendous job. They've been working for a long, long time on putting this together. And I would, would hope sincerely that the commissioners would consider approving the upgrades to the, to the regulations. They're needed. Thank you.
We have to be on time because we're over.
Yeah, email them, they know.
Okay. Yeah, is there anything else? Because we've got the state treasurer's office meeting for 15 minutes.
If we're trying to get those few, the first meeting in May, we'll work with the Township Trustees Association to maybe set up an additional meeting just to make sure they're all on the same page.
Yeah. I, I think that would be a good change effort. And like you said, it's a team effort. I mean, you guys all work well together and you've done a great job with, with this timeline and, and the improvements. And like you said, it's, it's not to have the Taj Mahal system, but it's to protect the people in, in the county as well to have a decent product.
Good job. It looks great. Thank you.
Thank you guys for coming in.
Very good.
We appreciate all your time and everything.
Thank you, everyone.
How you doing? Are you in Florida?
Yes, I am. I'm in Fort Myers.
What's happening there today?
And you thought I wasn't working. I don't know, can you see? Those are golfers. You were looking at my screen.
How warm is it today?
Pardon me?
How warm is it?
Where am I? I'm sorry, Sadie.
How warm is it there?
It's about 75 right now. It's been getting up in the high 70s.
Nice.
Wow, nice.
Yeah, it's very nice.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And that worked out really well. He wanted to, he wanted to speak.
He, he, you should understand.
But I, see, I can't, I can't speak for him, obviously, as 30 years, you know?
Larry, because that's what I'm thinking, okay, where are they missing? Because if, if they can get a bond, I would think they can't do anything.
He really feels strongly, he does feel strongly about it because of the fact that he's been burned. And so that's, that's where he's at.
But you know what, it makes sense. And I think we asked him before, but he didn't explain it as well as he did today.
Yeah.
And, and like I said, the, the whole thing is, is, you know, you think if we got, yeah. So, so that, that really helps.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you.
It's very nice to meet you. Sorry I didn't get to meet you.
All right, we'll talk again.
Who do we have here?
Okay, so Nick Handcart and Rebecca.
Hi Rebecca, hi Nick.
Hey there.
Hey, everyone. How are you?
Wonderful.
Thank you for your patience. Sorry we ran over a little bit.
Oh, not a problem. If you're all ready, we can get started.
Go ahead.
Oh, all right. So thank you so much for letting the state treasurer's office join us today. It's a pleasure that we're going to be able to talk about stable and the direct deposit option that we'd like to offer the county. So I'm going to let Nick take it over. He's going to do the presentation, answer any questions, concerns you have, and we'll get started. So Nick, the floor is yours.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Rebecca. And commissioners, I greatly appreciate your time. I apologize that my background is not Fort Myers, but I will try to make this entertaining nonetheless. I'm still going to try my best to stick to the schedule. And I also want to let you know that if you have any questions at any time, please feel free to interrupt me. Let me know if there's anything that I can answer about the program that we're offering or I'll stop here and there throughout the, throughout the time. And I'm sharing my screen right now. So if you can't see something in a couple of seconds, let me know. But at the moment, I'll take no news as good news. And so the reason why we're bringing this is because stable accounts are a problem solver in the sense that for people with disabilities, they're receiving government, or many I should say, are receiving government benefits. So whether that's Medicaid, Social Security, Housing and Urban Development, food stamps through the Department of Agriculture. There are so many different types of benefits that people can be receiving based on their needs. And these programs are incredible. They do a great job on a daily basis to be helping people out. But the problem that we solve comes in when an individual receives these benefits, then that agency, you know, let's just say Medicaid, for example. Medicaid will then turn around and say, hey, we are going to continue to give you this benefit, but you are only allowed to have a certain amount of assets in your name. And so currently that's $2,000. So with that asset limit in place for individuals, whether they're employed or not, that makes it really difficult for anybody to save for retirement, to a long-term, goal-oriented savings like a down payment on a house or a car or any other type of long-term expense that we might be thinking. Or even for that matter, just a rainy day fund. Because I know myself that, you know, I'm, I'm here in an apartment, but last Friday, my walls started leaking through my window because of all the ice that was melting. So that's a problem that we needed to fix immediately. And so for people that don't have that kind of emergency fund, then they may not be able to take care of something like that. So what a stable account could do is it fixes that problem. A stable account allows for people to be able to save above that resource limit that that government agency has given them. So in this case, it's typically $2,000 across the country. It may fluctuate here and there, but for many folks, the asset limit is $2,000 across the board. And so that is including all of their accounts combined. They're not allowed to have over $2,000. And if they then do go over $2,000, then at that point, it becomes what is called accountable resource. So their benefits are either going to be cut off for a month or they're going to be extremely reduced for that month as well. So we, to simplify it, what we do is we come from federal law and that's right here with the ABLE Plan. Because back in 2014, the ABLE Act was passed and it stands for Achieving a Better Life Experience. And so here in Ohio, we have stable account. And that's just simply Ohio's ABLE Plan. And it stands for State Treasury Achieving a Better Life Experience. So I know that more acronyms is not what anybody wants, but only one and a half acronyms, not two. So I will, I will take that as a win. Let's see here. We, we already discussed a lot of these things that SSI and Medicaid are two of the big ones. But moving on, that since the ABLE Act was passed in 2014, not even being a decade old means that especially in the world of finance, that this program is extremely new. And so what my goal is on a day-to-day basis is to help educate people, let them know of what is available to them using their stable account. And so since the stable account was pretty late into the financial game, the opportunities that we did have was the ability to take several different aspects of other opportunities that people already have and put them together. So a 529 college savings plan means that anybody can contribute and where the fact that people have the opportunity for long-term savings, a checking account, meaning that people can use this every day if they'd like to. And a special needs trust because a special needs trust and a stable account have very similar goals in the sense that we both want to be able to help individuals with disabilities save for whatever their needs may be. But when it comes down to some of the nitty-gritty rules, that's where trusts and stable accounts kind of differentiate from one another as well.
Can I interrupt you for a second?
Yes, please.
So you're saying that it's $1,000 now that if I'm disabled, I can have in my account. We're going to go to $2,000. And you said you had an apartment that the walls were leaking coming in. How much did that cost to have it fixed?
Well, so that's more, that's a mix of myself and my landlord. So my, it was Friday afternoon that that happened. And so that means that it didn't get solved till Monday. So that means that I covered the costs until, until Monday, which is about $1,100. And then the landlord covered the rest, but I will be getting reimbursed. But that's just me. So that's just my, I live in an extremely old building that, you know, the year it was built has 18 as the first two numbers. So that's not the best. But when it comes to people that are taking advantage of stable accounts for people with disabilities, that their resource limit is $2,000.
And that, that's my, my problem because as a kid, I lived through that with my, my mom and dad. So $2,000 is really the minimum amount. Is the stable account just for the state of Ohio? Or is that the federal program and 2,500, 3,000 of a buffer zone? If they have that, that's not much. So I lived through, if us kids made more than $2,000 a year, they took it all back at the end of the year for my parents. And at 95 cents an hour, we would make that, but they, they'd lose it. So that, that $1,000 number is, I think, is kind of, kind of low or kind of minimal.
Yeah, so instead of, you know, you, you mentioned, you know, taking it back at the end of the year. It's done on a month-by-month basis now instead.
Month-to-month, that's, that's, that's my issue with. If I go over $2,000, that person still has to go live. But it's, it's a technicality that it just, because it's near and dear to me, that just doesn't make any sense that you take it back month-to-month and I'm trying to live month-to-month.
Yes, no, you, you are echoing many of the concerns that we hear on a day-to-day basis. And so the ABLE, ABLE accounts were originally designed so that when it was passed through the federal government, their original design was that each state would have their own plan. So you know, Ohio would have ours, California would have theirs, Florida would have theirs, but they would only serve their citizens. That would kind of be their goal. But we've seen that, you know, the ABLE Act was passed in 2014. We're here early 2021 and there are still only 43 states and that's including DC. So 43 entities here across the country that had ABLE programs. So that means that seven states are kind of left in the dark almost. And that's where programs like Ohio's really come in handy because just because our plan was born in Ohio and it's administered here in Ohio, it's nationwide. So we are allowing people from all 50 states to join this program. And so we already do have 50 people from all 50 states enrolled. You know, just here in Ohio, we have people from all 88 counties represented and we're extremely proud of both of those. We just ticked over 21,000 accounts nationwide. So when we started in 2016, that's under five years. That's something, you know, I love to talk about because word of mouth has been extremely beneficial for us. And frankly, last year was a very important year for just us educating people because of the stimulus checks. So when individuals receive stimulus checks, they wanted to make sure that that money was going to be able to be protected long-term. And that's exactly where we came in.
But with the stimulus, it is not counted towards their income or their spend-out limit, correct?
For 12 months.
For 12 months, okay.
And so the issue then becomes is that, you know, when that 1,200 gets put into the, into the checking account of that person, then, then it becomes a co-mingling of funds. So they can't necessarily discern which dollar was stimulus and which dollar was not. And while that seems kind of con- And while that seems um, kind of convoluted and, you know, a, a very laborsome process, it's because it is. So people would have rather just taken that and they would make sure that it's protected for longer than the 12 months.
Okay. So how many people do you have participating in these accounts across Ohio, do you know?
Yeah, so I'm actually, I can pull that up right now for you, because I believe we are at 60% of folks that are out of state. So in about 2019, we saw things coming from out of state. I'm gonna look this up right now for you.
From out of state?
Yes. So we have, um, we do have more people that are participating outside of Ohio. So let's see here. I'm actually just pulling up the email right now that we currently have 21,467 individuals enrolled in stable account. And
For total.
And for Ohio's total, we have 8,500 of those.
So they're allowed to come from outside of Ohio to open these accounts here?
Yes, and so everything's done virtually. So people do not have to come, uh, you know, into the state or make an appointment. Since everything is done on our website, and that's actually the way it's been done since 2016, uh, we were extremely prepared for uh, all of the curveballs that last year threw at us. Um, although we didn't know those were coming, um, it just allowed us to be able to make sure that people could still open accounts and maintain those accounts, even when the banks weren't allowing people in person, because people don't make appointments, there's no brick-and-mortar facility uh, to go and open up a stable account at.
Okay, so a stable account, I could have $2,000 in that. And I, can I have my checking account as well?
Yes, and so actually, I am going to skip ahead here. So um, just bear with me, because I want to answer this question, because I think it's really important that we're getting to this now. Uh, so there's an annual contribution limit when it comes to stable accounts. So you hit the nail on the head, um, just a moment ago, when you mentioned in checking accounts and savings accounts combined, that's $2,000. So again, anything more than that uh, should be put in a stable account to make sure that it's protected. And so for a calendar year basis, people have the opportunity to put in up to $15,000. And so that's per calendar year. So for example, if somebody puts in $10,000 in 2021, when the calendar flips to 2022, then the annual, then everybody will have a clean slate. So they can put an additional 15 on top of what they already contributed. And there is no, um, there is no rule about spending the funds. Because we, and as I'll get into in just a minute as well, we have many parents that are opening this up for their children, very similar to a 529 plan, to where they know that they're going to be using this as a long-term savings vehicle so that they can properly um, set up their child for the future.
I'm really confused.
Yeah, because I, I thought you said the maximum capacity was 2,000. But now you're saying it's 15,000 if not employed, up to 27, which 15 of that can be from other sources, but the balance would be from like an employer. So I, I think we're getting confused.
So let me, let me clarify. I apologize. That, that $2,000 is before the stable account. So these benefits agencies, Social Security, Medicaid, uh, Housing and Urban Development, they are the ones that are putting these asset limits on individuals. They are the ones that are telling them they can only have $2,000 to their name.
In, in, in checking or savings, I, I get too very.
And so then what stable accounts are doing is we can say, you can use a stable account to take that $2,000 and make it 15. So allowing for people to save above and beyond that $2,000 without being penalized.
So I could help my brother, sister, kids, I could help them out and put up to $15,000 a year in there? Is there a limit that mom and dad could put in, or?
Yes, so that would be from all outside sources combined. So you know, say, you know, you have 15 family members and they all contribute $1,000. That would be your annual contribution limit right there. So what we're trying to do here is um, we are allowing for people to put money into the stable account, which is by law, an asset shield, and then allowing those individuals and their families uh, to be able to save up to $15,000 per year.
How do I access that then? I may be getting ahead of you, sorry, I'm sorry.
No, you, you are not at all. And this is exactly, this is exactly why I love this. So um, the, the proper way that people access it now, are, are you asking accessing it as somebody that's contributing to the account? Or accessing it as an account holder?
So i- if my understanding is right, mom and dad are giving me $15,000 to put in account to a rainy day fund, or if they're not there, uh, there. So as the person that is disabled, that the family has put money in there, that 15,000 dollars a year, and eventually could be a lot more. So you just raised another point. As the disabled person, how do I access that? And secondly, can anybody out in the family go access that, that money without the approval of that disabled person?
Yes, well, I'm gonna answer that second question with a, with a, with a hard no. Um, in the sense that, um, and, and I will also address this now, because I, this is a perfect um, kind of segue as well, is that when enrolling in the account, there are two different types of people that can access the account. That's it. So with stable accounts, we allow for account ownership to be option number one. So Travis right here that you see on the screen is a perfect example. He works for the Pickaway County Board of Developmental Disabilities, and he works there four days a week. And he is in the service department. But um, Travis has opened up his own stable account, and he is maintaining his own stable account. So that means that Travis is the only person that can access that stable account. Now, let's say that there is a minor, or maybe an individual who isn't uh, necessarily able to handle their own finances. Maybe that's because they have a guardian or a host of other reasons. That's where uh, what we see at the bottom here, an authorized legal representative will get involved. Um, and that ALR for short, that's a parent, that's a guardian, that's a power of attorney. Um, and so that parent guardian or power of attorney, they can also see the account. So let's just say a parent opens this account up for their child. Well, the ALR is in charge of the account. So they can make decisions on investing, they can make decisions on spending, but um, the account is always in the name of the person with the disability. So when you're asking about accessing the account, it can only be one of two people. So either the person with the disability that is in charge of the account themselves, or that authorized legal representative role.
Great. Thank you.
Of course. And so um, while I'm here, I wanted to answer some other questions on enrollment, because again, everything that we do is done completely online. And what's great about that is that we've been able to streamline the process so that there's no cost. We've eliminated all enrollment costs, and all we ask is that there is a $50 opening deposit. And so when I say that there's an opening deposit, that's not a fee. All it does is just create a balance within the account as well. And so I'm gonna, I'm gonna go back a little bit to make sure that we can cover eligibility, because now we, we will all have been caught up after eligibility, is that um, to make sure that somebody is able to open up a stable account, that we have a couple of different measures. One, we have an eligibility quiz on our website. So this is what I always advocate people are using, is the eligibility quiz. Because, you know, as I'm showing you right now, it's, it's something that's on our main screen, and it allows for people to get an immediate yes or no answer as to whether they themselves, or the loved one that they're taking the quiz for, or their ward, is able to uh, have a stable account. And there are a couple, um, there are actually only three rules for eligibility. Um, the first one is that somebody cannot have two accounts. There is only a limit of one per person. So that is a, that is a large difference between 529 plans and checking accounts and stable accounts, in the sense that you can have a lot of 529 plans, but you can only have one stable account. And so then the second rule is that um, that disability must have occurred or onset or have been diagnosed prior to the age of 26. And so right now, this is the federal law. Um, we're working um, at the federal law. We actually, we have been for several years now on something called the Able Age Adjustment Act, which would take that from 26 to 46. And we're doing that to really increase the amount of um, adults that can take advantage of this program, especially veterans. Um, because, you know, when we think about a 20s or a 25-year-old that can take advantage of this, that may be injured in combat, and a 27-year-old that would not be able to, um, just doesn't seem very fair. So that's exactly what we're trying to do. And that doesn't mean though, that people above the age of 26 cannot enroll. Uh, I just want to make that very clear, because we have people already in their 80s and 90s that have stable accounts. All that, all those people had to do was they just had to state that their disability, again, occurred or onset or was diagnosed prior to the age of 26.
And this money in, in the uh, stable account, that's, is an investment account? Is what it is, a bump in $15,000 of gaining interest, or?
Yes, so and let's, let's touch on that right now. Um, because a stable account is a savings and investment tool. So to clarify, the investment side is 100% optional. People do not have to take advantage of the investments, um, but it is just an added feature that we provide. So if people want to, uh, we have an FDIC insured, principal-protected bank safe option. So if people don't want to invest, their money's gonna be 100% FDIC insured. They don't have to worry about anything. Uh, if somebody chooses to invest, then they have the opportunity, as you can see, from four different mutual funds. And they can divide those funds up however they choose. Is, again, you know, we, you know, at the treasurer's office, we are not financial advisors, so we do not advocate for people to either invest or not invest, or, you know, invest in a certain portfolio. That, that'd be very illegal on our part. So um, what we do is we can tell people what's available to them. Uh, we, we see many trends in the market that um, that people have taken advantage of, but we do not advocate one way or the other. This is just available to them. And these are actually screenshots from the enrollment process as well. So we took this right from what everybody sees.
Excellent.
Now, um, these investment accounts do carry the same risk as any other investment account. So, you know, they do have the opportunity to have earnings, and they also have the, the chance that there are losses. And in the case where then we see earnings, that those earnings grow tax-free, and those earnings are tax-free upon withdrawal as well. And those two, those two are, facts are kind of very similar to how a Roth IRA operates as well. Now, I, I also wanted to go back here, because we, we, we were on this slide earlier, I, I, I know. But I wanted to focus on this if-employed aspect, because that's a huge reason of why I'm here today, is uh, because if somebody is employed, or if a, you know, a parent can always contribute to the account. And we can use this direct deposit process, you know, the same way for parents as well. But if somebody like Travis, who's employed by the county, and they want to be able to contribute some of their wages, you know, it doesn't have to be all. Uh, it could be a small percentage, it could be a hard number like $50 or $100, that if somebody wants to take advantage of your direct deposit, that's something that we can offer them as well. And so that's where people can grow that account to even over $27,000, because you have the 15 that's from outside contributions, so like from mom and dad, from grandma and grandpa. But that extra, you know, kind of icing on the cake is gonna be from employment and wages. So uh, the amount that people can direct deposit is completely up to them, um, how much of their wages they want to be direct depositing. But this is a huge tool that we are making available to people, because, you know, this wasn't available to people a year ago. So we want to be able to make sure that as many people as possible are aware of this as we kind of educate uh, and let people know. What's great about this is that from an employer perspective, so from the county perspective, is that all of, I, I'd say 90% of uh, the process is completed by us. So they will log into their account and request a direct deposit form. We populate it for them, they print it off, uh, or, you know, just get a PDF, and then send it in to the payroll department. So typically, that'd be the auditor's office um, in most counties as well. So then the auditor's office would then take that information and uh, treat it similar to how just, you know, a parent will contribute to a 529 plan, or somebody contributes to a retirement account. It's a direct deposit, it's not a payroll deduction. I think that's also something that's important to note as well.
Who's submitting this information to the disabled person or the disabled person's family?
That would be a mix of our office, along with, we would ask that um, you know, whether it's the county auditors or the county itself, help us out to promote. So we, typically what we've seen is that uh, we have two different webinars. So for example, you know, once, once a partnership would be agreed to, that we would promote a, an educational webinar to, whether it's myself or another member of our outreach team would provide, you know, a free public webinar to as many people that are employed, would like to join. And we talk about the, we talk about the program itself exactly like what we're doing now, except then what I'll also add on to the end of it is how to take advantage of direct deposits. So what steps people need to take uh, within their account, you know, even just down to what button to hit to be able to make sure that we can uh, create the right form for them. So disseminating information is always something that we try to do, but we know that you all uh, have a much better connection to your employees than we do. So whether it is just an email blast, letting people know that these webinars are taking place, or an email blast saying, hey, you know what, um, stable accounts offer direct deposit, and these are flyers and information that we provide as well. So, you know, we are not asking that the county creates anything. The only thing that we would ask is that the county would maybe send out information through a newsletter or an email blast.
What department within the county typically deals mostly with the disabled folks? That, that would be the main place, correct?
Well, I can answer that. First of all, has anyone spoke to our auditor at all about this?
Rebecca, would you like to jump in?
Um, no, I have not. I would like, I wanted to give you all the, the beginning presentation and then go from there.
Thank you.
Yeah, because I think it'd be important to, because really, it would only pertain to our employees, correct?
That all county employees.
Exactly, all, well, county, yeah.
Yes.
County employees would only be eligible, that, that are eligible for this, correct?
Well, so um, anybody that has a stable account as an employee can take advantage of this, you know, extra direct deposit. But the partnership with the county is increased education. And we would also tailor specific direct deposit forms based on what the auditor's office needs. So um, we've seen that most different places have a few different tweaks and needs um, based on their direct deposit system. And so we would work with the auditor's office to create a very specific form for employees that they could take advantage of.
Okay.
So it would be a very specifically tailored process. And so then, of course, you would have, um, you know, it may be employees with disabilities themselves that are taking advantage of this, but you could also have parents of children that are taking advantage of this as well.
Parents that work for the county, but maybe direct deposit into a child's account?
Yes, you are exactly correct.
Okay, so, okay, I, I think I get it then. So then, it's no different than direct depositing into a different bank? As far as the auditor's goes, is that correct?
Yes, exactly, because uh, typically the main things that the auditor's offices um, care about, uh, that, that we have worked with is, you know, obviously, you know, name, possibly social security number. But they want to know their stable account, accounting and routing number, which we of course provide to them in that direct deposit form. But then the third thing that they really want to know is how much are they gonna be direct depositing? Is it gonna be a hard number, so it doesn't matter what their earnings might be? Or is it a percentage that may be changing? So um, we offer both of those. Uh, sometimes we have auditor's offices, it takes one of those completely off the board or requests. or requests that one of those go completely off the board. And, and that's up to, you know, we're able to do that if need be.
So, all you need really from us today i- is that we are interested in providing this to our employees to either direct deposit into their own stable account or have the option to deposit into maybe one of their disabled children's account.
Yes, and so what we, yes, you, you are exactly correct. And so what we have though is um, one of our office protocols is we have an MOU, so a memo of understanding um that both our office would sign and the auditor's office would sign. But we know that just to sign the MOU alone, you know, that we need to work with the commissioners' offices uh in each county as well. So, uh, that's why, you know, Rebecca thought it was very important um to bring you all on so that wh- whether that uh is a vote necessary or not um to see that if, you know, this, this free opportunity could be available to the auditor to have county employees take advantage of.
One last question I have is, these counties, is this a available to the public?
Yes, it is. So, this, we have, we have a few different partners thus far across the state. So, for example, the state of Ohio. So, uh, you know, I am an employee of the state. And so that means that, you know, if I have a child, then I would be able to contribute to their account through direct deposit or any state employees that have a disability, they're able to um, they're able to take advantage of this direct deposit as well. But it is, it is open to the public, yes. So, what we are doing here is a really focused in sense of education and awareness because since this is new, um, a lot of people still don't know that it's available to them. Or if they do know that it's around, they don't know the specifics about direct deposit or that it could be pertinent to them. So, uh, what we're always trying to do is increase education and increase awareness.
But, but as far as the public goes, we don't have to, we're not responsible at the counties as far as the auditor doing anything with the public. It's just getting the word out, so is that correct?
Yes, exactly, yes.
Because I would think that you would wanna meet up with like um our superintendent at the, the Board of DD who has, you know, they don't have a workshop anymore, but they, they have numerous employees and stuff that have family members that are disabled. Or maybe meet up with our jobs and family services who work a lot with seniors.
Yes, uh, y- you, you still are exactly correct. And actually, you know, I have been in this role since twenty sixteen. And one of the things that I've been, I've been, have the ability to do is, you know, with my job in outreach, when I could drive around and, you know, meet people face to face, is that is exactly what I did. So, I would drive to each county in Ohio, I've been to each county a couple times. And I would go into the county board of DD. And then before privatization, I would go into those private workshops. Now, I, I still talk with those private workshops just on a different basis um as well as probate courts, jobs and family services, social security offices, help me grow offices as well, but those have mostly been absorbed into the county boards as well. So, those are all touch points that I have with each organization within a county. Um, but when we first, actually, when we first really started to roll out this direct deposit program, you know, we, we did outreach to county boards who we have a really good relationship with all across the state for all eighty eight of them. And they told us, you know what, Nick, we really like this, this is, this is nice, but we can't just do this for our employees alone, we need to get the full county involved. And so, that's why when it comes to whether it's those webinars or getting the word out, um, once the county agrees to it, then that's where we, you know, I'll use some of my other connections within the county to make sure that we can continue to get the word out. Because uh people want to know that this is available to them. But, you know, eh, uh, at the moment, uh, at their suggestions, it takes the full county.
Yeah, and you know what, I, I think this is a wonderful tool because, you know, people do tend to live paycheck to paycheck. But at the same time, for someone that's disabled, I mean, they struggle as it is, but it saves the money that it won't negatively, eh, you know, work against them. I, I think this is a great idea. I also think it, it's a great ideal for parents who have disabled children that worry, you know, and a lot of times they supplement those children. And they worry about what happens someday when the parents aren't here, you know. They can now put money in this account for this child's use.
Thanks, Commissioners. I just also like to add that uh Lake County and Asher Beal County have already partnered with us on the direct deposit. Um, so you, we've our neighboring counties and we're working to get the rest of the Ohio eighty eight um counties on this as well. So, um, just slow and steady, as you, you know, it's kind of hard not being able to travel and get the, the word out. So, but there is others that have joined.
So, so what is our next step from here? I know you have a memorandum, but I would think that you'd wanna talk to the county auditor next to, to see, you know, get their input before we would pass something, is that correct? So that when it goes out, because like you said, some county auditors have either put some kind of a, I wanna say restrictions, but limitations on how this works. So, is that, would, would that be your next step? Or would it be, I mean, I would assume you'd wanna talk to the county auditor regarding this to get their input back on it.
Yep, so what I'm gonna do following this meeting is I'm gonna reach out to, to the auditor with Nick on there, tell him that we've talked about it at this commissioner's meeting, everyone's, you know, very involved.
Word, yeah.
Give her a little presentation, let her know, see where she has any issues, concerns. Um, and then I'll bring everyone back together, probably via email, and we can continue then the process that way.
I, I think that would be a wonderful idea.
Excellent, sounds great.
And unfortunately, we're running over again.
Yes, I apologize, I like talking, sorry.
I can't thank you both for bringing this to us. I, I really think this is a great plan. And, and especially if I was a parent of a, of a child with disabilities, the fact that I can actually put money towards future use for them in the event that someday I'm not here, I, I think it's a great tool. I also think it's a great tool for people that are on disability that, you know, they, they do tend to leave, look paycheck to paycheck because they're not allowed to earn money. And in this situation, this allows them to be able to plan for a rainy day or for an emergency that normally is just another clog in the wheel for them, you know, and stress for them that they, they up to this point have not been able to prepare for.
I, I could not agree more. I think, I think you put it extremely well.
Okay, well, thank you guys and, and we'll hear back from you, Rebecca, then.
Yep, absolutely. Once I hang up from here, I'm gonna be reaching out to the auditor and then hopefully we'll be in touch, if not today, tomorrow for sure, so.
Thank you for, for your presentation today. You really helped cleared up a lot of um concerns that we had or, or should I say not concerns, but questions. I, I appreciate both of you.
The, the thanks is all mine and, you know, as Rebecca mentioned, when there are any other questions or comments, please let us know, we're more than happy to, to answer, we're just an email or phone call away.
Thank you both, very much.
Thank you so much, Commissioners, we'll see you later.
Thank you, Commissioners.
When I get time.
And I can't do this by myself, right? That's a very interesting program. Not serious, but my parents, they would, if, we, the kids would make more than two thousand dollars at the end of the year, they'd take all the money they paid for each kid, take it away.
I know, like punish them. And it doesn't allow them, like you said, to prepare for any, like if they had a car emergency, everything's so come on up, Todd. I have to leave at eleven thirty, so I don't know. Sort of cut you, you may have to.
That's all we ask you in for, Todd, just to show that.
Yeah, you're tall enough. Okay. So, Todd, you gave us the list here
Yes.
of, of items that you feel are things that we need to have on our radar now, which are the asterisk ones.
So, to me, the asterisks are the most pressing and in particular, the largest problems.
Okay.
So, I don't know if you wanna go down through the list, if you wanna start with the forecast.
Well, why don't you go ahead and start, Todd, what you think?
Start from the top.
Yeah.
If you look at the revenue sheet, which is, it's just a two pager. Um, I guess these four numbers over here are to me what's most important right now. Um, for twenty twenty one, I'm currently estimating that we're gonna have forty eight million, eight hundred thousand in expenses and forty eight million, three hundred thousand in revenues. And that's just on the operating side. So, we're gonna go through five hundred thousand of our cash just, just to operate this year. And partly, we knew that that has to do with moving the labor from, and all the sales tax and blah, blah, blah. So, on top of that, of course, we're talking about the five to six million capital, which isn't in here at all, this is only operating.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, we would expect our capital or our cash balance to go down five and a half to six and a half million, depending on where those capital contracts come in. Going into twenty twenty two then, that betters itself a little bit. Um, we're almost breaking even then, however, that still does not include, include any capital. And ideally, what we would like is for both our operating and our capital to come in at the current year's collections. So, while it looks somewhat balanced there, we should be spending a million to a million and a half in capital every year. So, we're actually still a million dollars off balance, um, based on this current operations. So, keeping that in mind then and going to this list, that's where anything on this list is operating issues within exacerbate that issue unless we find somewhere else to save from. Um, the sheriff's labor contract, I don't need you to discuss it with me here in open session, but there have been different ways the board has handled labor unions. So, for this year in particular, Water Resources, um, JFS, they were told uh that they have to keep their whole package within a certain amount. And so, if they awarded a monetary somewhere, they have to find a sitting elsewhere.
Mm-hmm.
So, the question is, as the sheriff negotiates his contract, we already added the one and a half to his appropriations for this year. So, the question is, is, is his total contract additions have to fit within that amount that we've already added? Or is it going to be your intention to add more, depending on how those negotiations go? Again, I don't need that answer, but that's something for you to think about when you deal with Esposito. Um, you know, if I was trying to negotiate my staff, I'd like to know whether this is my total or that's, you know, my total.
Well, what was the instruction that we gave to the other unions and the other, um?
So, right, right now, your instructions were to stay, keep the total within that amount. You'll recall, Water Resources came back at the very end of December and did like a weird one point one three percent. But that's because that was the difference between what they had done and then the one and a half that we changed.
That we changed it too.
Um, but they kept their whole contract, one and a half total.
Okay.
Um, JFS, because they, their short money didn't even meet the one and a half, they came in under that. Um, and then of course, I, I believe Solidwaze has got the company.
And who's that, Solidwaze?
Solidwaze, yeah. Um, I think the dog word, you kept within the one and a half as well.
So then I'm assuming you would try to keep the sheriff within that same one and a half. And then if they go above the one and a half, then typical practices, he would need to find the additional funding savings within his budget.
That's, that's enough.
Okay.
Um, again, that's, that's something for you guys to discuss with, discuss with the other companies.
Now, have we officially branded the contract to Mr. Esposito? Because it seems like that's just like hanging, I mean, have we?
I believe that are the understanding that yes, he is doing it.
Okay.
Um, you could check with Janet Coles for sure, but I believe that's the impression right now of their people.
Yeah, because we need to clarify that for, I, and, and it's my understanding that Mr. Wilkins also understands that, but I, I think we need to make it
Yeah, I can double check with you.
Official, so there's no assumption of.
Right, you don't want two people doing double work and double.
Well, exactly.
Yeah. Um, you know, the sheriff pay comparison, I don't know where that's going, but uh certainly that can be the largest issue on this list, depending on how that comes out and how the forelones to deal with it. Um, but that could be something for future years. Um, the sheriff's fleet size and the vehicle turnover, the, the sheriff's treaty mill is kind of one issue right now. There are actually two separate ones. Um, increasing the fleet size in and of itself is a little bit more expensive than that. So, it's when you try and increase the turnover rate that we're seeing some significant changes. And I mean, two hundred fifty three, that will year changes.
Tell me what you mean by that.
So, so if I have, if I have a vehicle that I replace every eight years, and let's say in eight years, I have a hundred fifty thousand miles on it, okay? That means every eight years, I'm spending, let's say, thirty thousand. If I want to turn that vehicle in with fewer miles, then I need to turn it in, let's say, in four years. So, in four years, maybe I'll only have seventy thousand miles on it, but that means across eight years, I'm buying two vehicles now.
Okay.
So, rather than only spending thirty thousand every eight years, I'm not spending thirty thousand every four years.
Four years.
Or if you wanna reduce those miles even further, you gotta turn it over even more often. So, that's the frequency with which you turn over vehicles.
So, that impacts our.
Right, so currently, like our road patrol, we're trying to turn over every four years. And our normal vehicles, we do shoot for every eight.
Okay, road patrol is four because they do put the.
And they're, they're still coming in at a hundred and fifty average.
Right, because there are still two people or three people driving that same vehicle.
So, if you want that mileage to come down, you gotta, you gotta.
Get more vehicles.
Well, not, not more, but you have to turn them over faster.
You have to turn them over faster.
Right, so, the, the number that, that I've, I've been given is like ninety thousand. And so, the thing, the things that, that I'm hearing are different than what you're saying. Uh, and that's where my confusion comes in. Uh, the enterprise is telling one person, hey, if you do this, you start saving. And you're saying, if you do this, you're increasing our cost more instead of eight years for so.
That is an assumption. And it's a, it's a model. Is that if we turn these vehicles in with less than ninety thousand miles and less than four years, we'll get sixteen to eighteen thousand dollars. That's entirely possible. It's also possible that we won't, depending on the, the care with which you're given, et cetera. That has yet to be proven and that's one of the things when we switched to enterprise, uh, we indicated to the board, this, this will be our third year right now.
Yeah.
That it's gonna take us four or five years to start seeing whether we are getting that turn in benefit or whether it really isn't there. Um, the other, the other issue with enterprise's turn in benefit is that there's certain cars that do better and certain cars that do worse. One of the issues that we have is our official, they're very set in their ways. And so, for example, right now, Tacomas are the hot vehicle. That if you do a one release on a Tacoma, you're probably gonna come out ahead. The problem is nobody in the county wants a Tacoma. So, we aren't buying that vehicle that is gonna generate what enterprise is saying is that most value. We're going with something else because it's what we like. So, but you can't, you can't use this part of the enterprise plan and say, ooh, we're gonna get all this money if you don't use that part of the enterprise plan and buy the vehicles they recommend.
Are there any other counties that do as, as we started doing three years ago?
So, Summit, not Summit, Medina has used enterprise for a little longer than us, but they do not use the turnover. Um, I, I don't know of any vehicle that follows enterprise a hundred percent. Um, I've gotten three emails from people since we've gone, asking me what our experience has been. And that, my, my opinion is we've saved a lot of money in maintenance and we're doing as well as we ever did in gas, which that was our hope, which is to break even there. But we're still waiting to see the turnover. Of the few vehicles we have used enterprise to sell, we haven't done any better than what we've normally done on auction. Now, okay, as we're turning over eight year old vehicles with a hundred thousand miles, so you're.
Nothing there.
Even if Justin can't get you much more, I mean, the difference between two hundred and two thousand is nothing. Um, so, that's something that the board is going to need to explore as to whether it wants to jump whole hog into that experiment and see if it works out, whether it wants to do a smaller, and that's kind of what we've sort of been trying. We've got a few vehicles, the building department is one area, the prosecutor's office is another, where we are looking every year and asking enterprise, well, what can we turn these in for now? where we are looking every year and asking enterprise, well, what can we turn these in for now? What can we turn these in for now? To see if this process is going to work for us. So far, it hasn't proven so incentivizing that we were like, ooh, let's do this for sure. I mean, it's, it's been a.
Has enterprise ever been here? Because I wasn't here when this happened. Has enterprise come in and spoken in open meetings?
Several times. They came when Mike was here. That's when we started. They came when Jeff Lee was here, and I think they had a meeting just with Jeff Lee. Maybe more than that, they come out with you and hold a meeting just with you. Again, it's, you know, they have their program they're trying to sell.
I understand. Anybody selling something makes benefit for themselves. So I, so this is, the, the reason I'm asking this is because the chief deputy has, has talked with enterprise. And when he's spoken with me, he has a different version. Is it feasible that you, the chief deputy and enterprise in the same room at the same time? I'd like to be there too. And it's just like, because there's, there's such a variation of that, is just like, the only way to do it is bring all parts to it in the same place, same time. So you have three years' experience with it. Chief deputy doesn't have any experience with it besides what he's heard. And just to, just to clear up all this stuff that just, it's bouncing off walls and doesn't make, doesn't make any sense. And that's the only way I can think of is doing that. I, I'd really like to.
If you do this a couple of days, or if you want to do it on a Tuesday.
Tuesday would be, that, that would be really good for me.
I mean, they almost died, but enterprise will jump with the opportunity to come and convince us we should be doing what they want.
Absolutely, and they're good salesmen. But that's it. So the whole thing is, is the, the salesman aspect of it, we all understand that. But I'm hearing two very different variations, and the only way to do that is put all pieces in the same place.
Is Ralph talking to the same person that we deal with?
I don't know. He got, that makes a big difference. And that would be, he got the number from another county, and that's enterprise, so. And they, so yeah, so there's, I'd like to, if there's different representatives from enterprise, whoever our rep is.
Who is our rep? That's.
Or is there a program that doesn't matter?
We have Jennifer Isada and they're our main account.
Yeah.
I mean, and of course, they have a manager who usually comes out with them and gets them out. Yeah, we can get them out.
Yeah, because we want who represents us.
Absolutely.
And what is, what is it? Are you just wanting them to present?
I, I, I want them in the room. I want the chief deputy in the room, you and I in the same room.
Well, so, okay, the sheriffs, we've got, the sheriff is roughly half our fleet. There's a whole other half.
Right, right, right.
Enterprise talks about the whole thing. Is that what you, you want the whole fleet?
Right, yeah, I want to see where, where there's different variations of what people hear.
This presented in open session.
I would like you, if we can.
Actually, I think that the three of us should be involved, not just.
No, I, I, I'm not even, I just want the information, and then figure out what the information truly is, rather than sit here and argue about it in open session.
No, I think, I think we should have it scheduled on our agenda and so that we can all hear.
So shoot for Tuesday, have enterprise come out and represent them.
Yeah.
And I'd like to make sure the chief deputy can be here to hear that as well.
Yeah, so make sure that he's available on a Tuesday. But I would like it presented here to the board of commissioners, because again, it's not just about the sheriff.
No, I know.
We have a whole package deal to cover downtown county.
I get that. And, and it may have to be on a Thursday, because I think Ralph is commissioner of meetings Tuesdays. But I would check on that.
So the building staff is one. It was actually considered last year, we're starting to consider it again this year, and I think you're familiar with that issue.
And as far as the building staff, now, now, explain to me. Randy had new job descriptions for.
So what happened was Randy rewrote three of his job descriptions. They were refactored. One of them came back higher. The other two came back within the range that those people were still in. So then he created a promotional job. So instead of, let's say, a labor one, he made a labor two, and had that factor and that factor higher. And what he's doing now is he wants to promote his people then to the next job class, in which case they would need a pay raise to go with that. So that's where Randy is. The, the next line then that kind of goes in with that is how in general are the commissioners viewing their staff, particularly the directors, in handling their staff to proceed with these type of issues? You've had directors in the past who came to you first and said, I want to assign these extra duties, which will require a raise. What are your thoughts? And the commissioner said, don't even assign the duties. You have other, you have other directors who assign the duties, and then come and say, well, I'm asking them to do more, now I have to pay them more. And then you have others of us who feel some of our staff is very, very deserving, and yet have waited because we understand there's not a lot of money floating around. So in some regard, we'd just like there to be some consistency so that all of us understand that all of us have the same opportunities to get our people. Because, you know, it's, and you hate to say this, but if one director's always getting our staff stuff and another's not, then your staff looks at you and says, why am I working for you? The reality. So those, those two issues to me go kind of hand in hand. I've never said that his people don't deserve what they're getting. What I've said is, we need to standardize this process so that everyone who deserves something can, can have the.
And, and like you said, and the way that people have gotten around that is, they change the job description and then add more duties, so it factors for.
Well, see, to me, even changing the job description by your directors means to come to you, because that does lead to it. It's like, why, what, what needs changing this job description? I mean, basically, the people before the change and after the change are doing it. Anyway, that's for your basic angle.
And I mean, but, but if we're changing the job description or adding more duties, does that mean it's reducing the staff? Not necessarily.
Most of what happens is, I look at my list of, let's say, what Joan does, and I say, ooh, this sounds better. And in fact, it factors better. We all have the factoring sheets now. And so Joan's doing exactly what she's always done, but I reworded it so that it now takes score higher, and now I say, well, she needs a raise.
And that's what Randy, that's what Randy did. People were already doing those jobs, doing the work, and he changed job description to fit the work.
Yes, his argument, I believe, is that it's before Randy, I want to say Chris, but I don't.
Charles, Charles Copper.
Charles, his, Randy's argument is when Charles worked with Clemens Nelson, he didn't do it right to begin with, or this whole problem wouldn't exist. Of course, Charles's argument at the time was, no, I did do it correctly, because in fact, one of the employees even brought it up, and Charles said no. I believe that's correct. So that's part of how we are to where we are. You have a new director who now disagrees with what the old director did. But where we are is very clearly where the old director had put us at the time, making the decisions based on the study that is, as it was happening. So again, that's that issue.
But Clemens Nelson, they, when they factored, the, the employees that are still there, they factored them within their current pay range. But Randy's saying it wasn't factored right because they have.
He's saying that wasn't factored right because they didn't have the correct job description to factor off of. And, you know, Clemens Nelson met with every director, and, and some of them had other people in the room to go over, okay, what does this person really do? And, you know, they made notes off the job descriptions. We were describing it, you know, because again, job descriptions are somewhat vague. They, they tried to get a little more detail, and then they factor based on those meetings and those notes. Now, again, that's been three years ago, and we are where we are today. My argument would just be, it seems like within your departments, there needs to be a standardized process so that the squeaky wheel doesn't get all the oil, but everybody knows how to proceed, and they can all proceed at the same time. So that there's equal chance for all your employees. And of course, the next two are then also sort of related to that. I have been bringing up the fact that we moved everyone to the minimum. What happened to a lot of people was when they moved the pay scale, they were at the top of their old scale, and now they're at the bottom of their new one. So even though they fit within the pay scale, we said, problem solved. The fact is, they're looking at people getting hired. And that's exactly what they're making. And here, they've been here, you know, fifteen, twenty, I don't know where the case may be. I did provide the commissioners with the rough breakout of, of how much it would cost to get the twenty-five-year pluses up to the middle, blah, blah, blah. It's, it's not an inconsequential amount.
But that's part of the, the next phase of it. I mean.
So that's where we do need to start going, is now that everyone's to minimum, is how do people move through the scale? You know, a lot of organizations have automatic steps. The issue with that is, if you're in a tight budget, those cause havoc. We've always had the luxury of saying, you know what, the budget's tight. We can't do things. On the other hand, a few years later, then we realize how behind we are, and I mean, it's just, you know, it's six and a half that doesn't get it. So I know Janet is planning on coming to a march and discussing the, the pay scale in particular and updating it. And I think in with that should be this discussion on, now that we've got the minimum taken care of, how is it that people progress through that scale? You know, ideally, when I take a job, I can, ooh, in twenty years, I'll be making this amount based on my retirement, and I'm not thinking I'm gonna stay here at the minimum forever. And that is kind of where we have people at, so. The next one's the airport. The, we discussed the airport capital side. There will also be a capital, an airport operating side. I don't know where we are in the airport. It seems like it's on hold here for a little while. But ultimately, you need to get your staff, and I don't know who that is, out to talk to the airport people that actually run it, Hunter, and in particular, his general man that, that kind of oversees the day-to-day, Mr. Vanna doesn't really do the day-to-day. Get out and talk to those people, so that from day one to day, you know, or days, day, whatever, when the airport's in control on day one, when we're in control, there's, nobody notices, it all operates the same. There is going to be expense there, and I keep pointing out, because the county can't utilize some of the methods that the airport board has used, it's going to cost us more simply to maintain where they are. So if you look at their expenses, for example, it, it, it just is gonna cost us more. We can't have volunteers fixing roofs. We can't have, when we fix a roof, we can't just use whatever's available. We need to hire things and get the correct thing out there. Those, just those type of little things. We're going to start doing pavement maintenance programs, which hasn't been done. That's kind of an expense. So there is gonna be an operating side if we take it over. And for a few years, that's going to be a deficit in terms of the revenue the airport brings in versus what we're spending just on the operations. Our goal in the capital side is to begin correcting that if we can, so that its revenues roughly do equal its, its expenses. But that will take us a few weeks to get to, if we do decide to take it over. If we aren't going to take it over, we need to let the airport know that. We need to let them know what support they either have or don't have coming. They can begin making their decisions, because right now, we're spending a plan, and we spend a lot when we do that. The county administrator, there has been talk of making that a full-time position, which is a significant increase you were previously spending. I don't need the answers now, but again, that's, that's a major expense, both for this year and when we continue operations.
You know, Todd, as far as that goes, we do have several county administrators lined up. Is it the first of March, Amy? Can we look at our town?
Yeah, they're coming.
The first or second week.
And all coming at the same time?
We're gonna be, no, no.
Same day.
Same day, though.
Okay, that's recommended.
Yeah, so it's, it's hard if you try to go along and, and we'll talk, and we'll know the difference.
Correct.
Yeah, I think, so we're gonna, just to talk to current county administrators and get their feedback on what they feel works, what are some of the challenges, and then so that we can have a better understanding. As far as going right to the airport, why Amy's looking this up? I know I've met with some people from Paco, which is the, the, on the opposite side. And, and so, I know I've been talking to some different people, getting some different feedbacks, but you know what? In the end, after meeting with one of them, I'm wondering if we really shouldn't get a consultant involved. And I know your objection to that is because of the time it takes, but they have.
An objection, it's, one of my objections to consultants in general.
Yes.
Is we have a history of saying, we don't know what to do, tell us. And so you're paying an extraordinary amount, extraordinary amount of money for someone to tell you to enter the two plus two. There are some things at that airport that are so obvious. We don't need a consultant to come up to us. So to me, before we even go to a consultant, we should be able to work out, well, here's where we think we are. Here's the part that we're unsure of. Can you double check this for us and then fill us in, and you're gonna get a lot more for your money. The other issue is, you know, like, we hired an architect for the board of elections who came back with a three-point-two-million-dollar plan that was gorgeous, and this board had no intention of spending three-point-two million. Now, why the board didn't tell the architect to start with, here's your budget, so we wasted all that. So if we're gonna hire a consultant for the airport, you need to understand what you're looking for that person to tell you, what you're looking to spend on the airport, period, in terms of operating and capital, and then let that person give you a plan that fits within that.
But Todd, pulling back to the, the board of elections, we were never involved in those discussions.
You, you are the ones, though, who told the architect, go talk to them. I mean, you hired the architect. You had every opportunity to say, here's the budget to work with, and, and we didn't do that. And we've done that, and I'm not just saying, we've done that over and over and over.
I was gonna say, I don't, I think that was before, when I was coming right back in and.
I mean, we have architectural drawings for the sixth floor, we have architectural drawings for the board of elections. We have plans for the old portion of the building. I mean, it's.
Well, I think, Todd, the answer to that then is, I know Joanne has found someone that can do an appraisal, like on the FBO and that part. And she's instructed to go ahead, because that's, that's one piece of our puzzle with the airport. As far as knowing what repairs and what it would cost to, it's not, you know, one of the things to come back, how we're gonna generate revenue. And that is, if we went and installed a new hanger or two.
Well, you definitely need to come up with your vision of what, what is the airport gonna be? And we talked about these phases of.
Yes.
You know, what is your goal just in the first five years? Do you have more hangars, or do you not have more hangars by the county? Are you gonna raise your user fees? There's a lot of approaches you have. And again, consultant A's gonna tell you to do it this way, consultant B's gonna tell you to do it that way. Nobody's right or wrong.
What user fees? I don't think, are we even charging user fees?
Nothing right now, right?
There's nothing out there.
We, we generate very, very little revenue, in part because it's an annual fee, and so one-time users can skip in and then move on. You know, let's say you're trying to get from Pennsylvania, and you happen to stop here along the way to feel up, you, you can have to pay the fee.
So that was one of the things when we spoke, is if they, the board owns it, they don't have any authority, and they don't have any teeth to be able to do anything. And if we own it.
We would have more ability to leverage, and, and there's, I mean, you can take pictures and bottom line, and all these type of things, try and go after it. Again, there's a lot of ways to, to alter these for it. And until the board is clear on which way they would love to head, I think you can end up spending a lot of money, that then everybody out there is gonna say, oh, don't do it that way.
Just get in there.
Yeah, and that's, that's the problem.
And now you're back to the same frozen and indecision of, well, well, what do we do?
And, and that's the problem I see with speaking to a lot of them out there, because, you know, one side doesn't like the other side, and, and it becomes more of a personal thing. But you can't pick apart and decipher, you know, bits and pieces out of it.
That's why I said the commissioners need to talk, and to me, you need to work with staff.
Yeah.
The outside world can offer their opinions, but you guys have to be able to filter that, and then decide, okay, realistically now, what can the county do? What can we afford? And then let's move forward on that. And it may not be what they want. It may not be what they want.
And that's the problem that's happening.
But it's gonna be what we're going to be able to proceed with. And that's been the nightmare of the airport for the last twenty years. Is everybody has their dreams, but nobody has a plan for how to get there. And so anything you do, you have twenty people criticizing. And so anything you do, you have twenty people criticizing the one people...
Nobody has a plan on how to start that process.
And you know, I've been involved with this for many, many years, and I can tell you, to start with, I mean, we should try to get it just to sustain itself, I mean, and have it...
That is our first goal, if you can even get there. So again, I don't, if you guys want to bring consultants, my advice is, have a better idea of what you're going to have that consultant of, because you're going to pay a lot of money for what may not end up being good advice at all once it comes down to it.
Well, I think you sort of have an idea, but my thing is, is what exactly is, I mean, I hear the potential's great, but then I met with someone that said, I don't know if I would go sinking a lot of money into it, because with the technology and the way things are changing over time, it may not necessarily. So that's why I'm like, hmm, maybe we need to get a consultant who specializes in county airports. But I agree, we have to have our questions. I mean, we can decide a lot of things. We can get quotes on, you know, if we think we need to build a hangar to generate revenues. We can find out from the current fuel operator how much revenue that generates if we take over the FBO and the...
We got all that.
I've got a copy of that now.
Yeah, we have all that, so...
If, sometimes, it sounds like it's the blind leading the blind, where we're at right now. And we've got all this data, and I kind of agree with you with the consultant stuff, is they all tell you something. We don't have a person that runs the airport. We've got a board that is tired, they've been doing the same stuff for forty years or whatever, since seventy-four, seventy-nine, or whatever the heck that is. What about looking at, the first step is getting somebody that knows how to run an airport, and then begin to build on that person, starts looking at it from a realistic point of view. I know how this thing's supposed to operate. This is number one to do, versus a consultant. We have somebody that, we've talked about, an airport manager.
And I think to select that person, you should have a rough idea of where you're going.
Where we want to go.
Because there are different types of airports and different types of managers. This manager may be good at that type of airport, this one may be good at that type. And so when you go hire that person, you're going to want to know, and be able to ask that person, okay, how do you get us from here to here, which is our vision, and see if that person can orchestrate.
And I mean, we can hire a manager that can go out there and tell us exactly what we know we need to do.
The question, right. And the question is, are you going to hire the person before you take the airport over? Or are you going to hire the person after you take the, are you not going to take the airport over and hire that person for the airport board?
I like the teeth thing.
Right now, to be honest, the airport, in terms of the day-to-day operations, I mean, it's taken care of by the staff that's there, and would still be taken care of by the staff that's there the day after we take it over. What the airport lacks is that overall vision and direction. And that's where people like Mr. Bonner and Gilmore and Homer have beat their heads against the wall, because they have ideas of what they'd like to see happen, but they have no money to facilitate it. So there's been no lack of people with ideas of how it should happen. And the same thing with the airport manager. But trust me, your airport manager's got to cut you a deal and say, I need, I need, I need.
Yeah.
What about having, and the leverage point is, the airport with the current, the way it is now, has no ability to really get grants from the FAA and...
Well, we have not ever not gotten our grant that we qualify.
A grant or a bunch of grants?
So there's two different types of grants. There's what they call their annual allocations, and we always get those. And then, of course, there's the big grants for larger projects. We have some larger projects in the works that we're working towards, and we do have those grants...
The FAA for the airport?
Potentially to get.
Okay.
Of course, the big project is the runway.
Right.
The other aspect, though, that I keep, the FAA will do the runways. They will not touch your hangers. They are not touch your, you know, all that asphalt that's around the FBO building and all that. I mean, there's no grants for that. That's your job to maintain that. They won't touch manway, hardway. They won't help you put in a new maintenance garage or a new fuel field or any of that type of stuff. So the FAA grants are based on the runway, the lighting, that type of thing. And we have gotten those, and we have proceeded with projects. They redid the lighting, they're redoing the taxiway to the north of the runway. They're moving that so that the runway is expanded, we meet qualifications. And in fact, I kind of explained the runway for the FAA actually said, no, don't do it this way, do it this way, so if you do expand, you can continue. So right now, we are not in jeopardy of losing FAA funding. The key is, the FAA is starting to say, well, we've heard for six, seven years now, there's more coming than it's just six, seven years. So that's kind of where it is.
Okay, so we need to spend some more time and figure out how we want to go about the airport then. Because I hear you saying, you don't think we need a consultant, but yet, who else is going to advise us? And you said, we hire a manager, all they're going to do is say, me, 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 me. I mean, it almost seems like we just need to work with the staff and work with maybe the current staff out there, and maybe like...
I mean, there are basic things the county could do the first couple of years...
Yeah.
That don't require that level of expertise. The board is always one resolution away from turning it back over to an airport. You can always remember that. That's, all it takes is a resolution.
Todd, I have to get going. IT department staff, I don't think, have we heard what they did with that money that we gave them last year? Because that was never answered.
There was no discussion.
And that's...
Has there been any process to me? I believe Janet...
We have, that day that you had Lloyd here, but there hasn't been any other feedback since that time.
Oh, she was going to tell you then, but yeah, we haven't heard it.
Yeah. And the court IT staff?
So there is an issue that Gordon, who was the old court IT person, went to the prosecutor's office. They hired another individual. There is some issues with that move that I'm still working on the court with. But the end result of those moves is they can't find $10,000, at which, again, we're still working. But if they can't work it out, then they would come due for general fund funding on that.
I thought that that position was always paid, but they increased their fees and stuff, because we have an IT board, and they opted to have their own IT.
That's what I'm trying to point out.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking. What happened, and why did it cost us more if Gordon left and went back to the prosecutor's office?
That's, I'm trying to work with them to see if it doesn't, but there is that potential.
Okay, I'm just curious, because, and then the last thing we have here is our commissioner's streaming real quick on that. I know, I don't know a solution for this. I mean, it's an issue with people streaming, they can't hear us, you can't hear them with the Plexiglas. I know people were complaining last night because Amy's typing too loud and she can't... I mean, I mean, I just don't know. I mean, in the past, you know, all we did was just have Amy record, and then...
There's been a love-hate relationship. You had video at one time.
And that went away.
There's goods and bads to it. We did away with that to where we only had the audios, and for, well, it was probably three or four years, all we did was post audio for a while. And then with coronavirus, we went back to streaming because you guys were meeting outside.
Zooming in.
And then it just kind of stayed because Vicki was zooming from home and that type of thing. So there's been a long love-hate relationship with live video, and you're not the only public entity that wrestle with it.
And I, Sabrina had said, the misinterpretation of what's said, or the, because they can't hear it, they can't get it. And I feel, I kind of actually sometimes maybe feel bad for the press. So I think getting rid of Zoom, so they get a good quality audio, would be serving them better than not.
Well, the other thing it does is, sometimes, before your guys' even meeting is over, you've got half the county up in arms.
Yeah, absolutely, because they can't understand. And because of the...
They haven't even finished that issue yet.
I've thought of that over and over, and like everybody, dislikes being misinterpreted. And I think for the press's benefit, that we get rid of Zoom and have a great quality audio they can sit and listen to, or they're more than welcome to come back here. That would be my...
The only thing, the prosecutor's office product was, is like, like today, you know, if we have more, a bigger crowd, but again, there's only ten, and you know, just have, we could do time slots so that they could come in and present.
The other solution is, and I mentioned, you could put a monitor down in the first floor conference room, and you could simply stream to that only, so that if there are more than ten people, they can go down there and sit and watch the meeting.
Because I'm the newbie, and I only did what Mr. Dean's doing. How many times have you gotten this room filled? I've only seen once or twice in the...
Oh, maybe three times a year.
Yeah, when people are ticked off. So those events, then you have downstairs. Other than that, Mr. Dean's the only person that we get to sit.
Yeah, and I know Chris was concerned about, like, Mr. Ames comes in, and he didn't say, but people coming in and zooming it, but I mean, that's, it's a public meeting. They can do, we can't stop that. I guess, I'm numb to that, because he's been filming us for years.
Is he zooming or just filming us?
He's just filming us.
So I mean, that is, anybody, that's, we found out three years ago, anybody that liked to come in with a camera is allowed to do that.
But I've never had people get all up in arms over something that Brian Ames posts, because he does have good quality video and audio versus this. I mean, it's so disrupting to our meetings, too. I mean, you heard people today, it's like, I can't hear you. And it's like, you know, you want us to wear a mask, you want us to have, you know, half-inch Plexiglas surrounding us, but yet, I'm not willing to go back to just Zoom, because I think it's important that people be able to come in and speak to us, one-on-one.
Yep.
And so, so that being said, then maybe, well, Chris has given us proposed resolutions to go back to our regular process, and again, it's what we did before.
Yep.
So, and it tends to work better. I know Joanne had a call from someone that, you know, and the other big issue is, people in the county are sitting there watching our meetings, and they're not working, you know? And it's an issue, and it's sad to say, yeah, we can put a policy in place, but you know what? If we are still meeting our requirements by having it recorded, posting it minutes with recordings, then I think we should go back to it.
I think that serves the press better than getting misinterpretations of that.
And by the time they put it out, it's too late. Then they put a redaction in the legal section, and no one sees it.
No, I agree with that.
And it's already up there.
Right. I'm with you. I think we should, Zoom should stop, and good audio quality should be available for the press or anybody else I'd like to listen to.
And they're more than welcome to come in and still, so...
You going to pass that today, or do you want to pass it Thursday? Still Zoom on Thursday, and we have Thursday to be honest with you.
Well, we want to get them noticed, and maybe we do it on Thursday, just so that it's for the following Thursday, so that they have notice for people that have been relying on Zoom. Now, we do have, heard some of those interviews with the county administrators, are those set up for Zoom?
Those are March 11th.
March 11th.
I don't know, I didn't schedule.
I'm trying to think if we had anything else that we were, because the problem is, I can't see that screen, they can't hear me, we can't, even if we pull it over, they couldn't hear us. So it's...
Are you talking where the county administrators are going to be on Zoom? And when will we have to have the public in on that Zoom call?
Because it's a public meeting for us.
So the audio?
Well, can't you project Zoom onto your board? The public still sees it the same as you do by sitting here watching it.
Right, and then...
We could just have the county administrators on there, and then, and then the audio is recording, so that not 5,000 people are zooming in, and it's only by invitation, right, Amy?
So we have, they're Zoom there, and the audio gets distributed as we're talking about.
But then how does that work for, like, the news people that say, oh, I can't come in? Every week, I want to Zoom in, so that's...
They have to make combinations.
Recording, which is what they've always done.
Well, that's true, they can have...
They have to record it.
The recording is not out online.
No, I mean, afterwards, right? They get, they can get a hard copy of that?
They can get a hard copy, yes.
But they can't get audio?
Right. And we can make it available to them, it's not out on the website.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
I mean, if they desperately...
I just have to convert it. And my ideal would be, the same time we post the minutes for that meeting, that audio goes out.
If there's feasibility.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay, all right. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I will make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it, roll call, Amy.
Tony.
Yes.
Sabrina.
Yes. And I'm eating my maroon.
Did you?
I should have asked before, but is there, are we meeting next Tuesday over anything, or are we skipping? That's something about the Thursday.
Let's talk about Thursday. Bring it up Thursday, Todd, so that we can see, because, I mean, if we're going to do it, I want to have things to talk about. I don't want to just keep talking. I want to have actual actions, and maybe we assign things on Thursday...
Well, that's what...
To have done, because I don't like to just...
Yeah, I don't either, but...
The airport, we have a call due to Thursday.